Hi Nicole.
I'm here, hello.
Thank you for being here tonight, we really appreciate it and looking forward to to hearing more about the Boys and Girls Clubs, the floor is yours.
Oh, great, thank you. I'm hoping that the presentation that I sent in will be up on your screen soon?
It is, or we all, we have it in front of us, because it was sent as an attachment, so we can follow along as well.
Okay, perfect, that sounds good. Alright, so good evening everyone, my name is Nicole Conrory and I'm the Executive Director of BGC Battleford, formerly known as Battleford Boys and Girls Club and Boys and Girls Clubs of the Battlefords. I'm proud to be joining you virtually, albeit, on the traditional land, known as Treaty Six Territory, in the home land of the Minot. So if you can go to the next slide. The Battleford Boys and Girls Club was established in 1976 to provide for the recreational, cultural, educational, and social needs of all children five to fourteen years of age in our community. We work to provide opportunities where our children can socialize with one another in a safe and nurturing environment. The children and youth who attend our programs are as diverse as the population of the communities we serve. Our main site is located at 1301 104th Street, and we have the privilege of operating under the beautiful building you see on your slide. Next slide. Should be a video, so I'm hoping you all can maybe watch it, or maybe you have watched it.
So I don't think that we have access to that video on the attachment, does anyone else believe it will be?
I think we have a PDF of the PowerPoint.
Yeah. Do we have?
Okay.
Probably not.
So, okay. That's okay then.
Can you share your screen and play that video?
You know what, if I, what I will do is I will upload the presentation and share my screen if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Okay, just one touch into it. Sorry, I apologize, I didn't realize that anyone has access to that. You know, we've been doing this virtual stuff for a number of months now, we think that I'd be used to it, but somehow, still not enjoying it.
Don't worry, we're all there. We tried our best and I think everyone's sort of understanding of that too, which is good.
Good. Okay, it's just loading here.
Nicole, you should be able to show your screen that you're now the host.
Okay, perfect, thank you, it's just loaded now, so.
There you go, it's coming up.
Perfect, now. Still think it's loading on my end.
It works really well when you want it, you don't want it to work, but when you want it to work, it doesn't work so well.
Isn't that the truth?
Could you go to slideshow, use slideshow from current slide, because maybe it doesn't, it won't play?
Yeah, I'm gonna try this. There we go. Was it glitching for you guys?
A little bit, yep.
Yeah, it's not playing, it's still loading, like I don't think the bandwidth is, you know.
Yeah, we don't have audio.
I have it on my, so I just, I have the link, it's right on, it's directly from your website, correct?
Yeah, there's no audio.
There's no audio, is there, are you on, you might have to select share sound and not do audio before playing? And that way it's not that bad.
Yeah, I think it's, Nicole, is it the same one that's on your website?
I don't think she can hear us.
Nicole, is it the same one that's on your website?
One second here, apparently the video's playing there, okay. Sorry, I had lost like all control of my computer here with the video.
So Nicole. Nicole, Nicole, is it the one that's on your website, the one that starts with doubt and that one?
Well, there's a couple that we have on our website, there's one that's the systemic opportunities, and I was going to show that to you all tonight as well. So there was a couple that I was gonna play, so now I'm just trying to get out of this screen here. Okay, if you guys have the time on your agenda, let me try one more time, if not, we can, we can keep on going.
Yeah, I mean, you wanna, you wanna try one more time here, otherwise, I think it's the same one that's on your website, but do you wanna try, you wanna give it a go one more time?
Yeah, absolutely, okay, so, let me share my screen again.
A little bit more here. Not necessarily like an external microphone, it's directed at a speaker, and it's kind of, because you can't have audio control. Because you can watch like a music video and have your Zoom all at the same time, right?
Right, I'm just gonna see if it's the same one, and I can just play you guys from here. I have a feeling it's the same one, but.
Yeah, you can still hear it.
So Nicole, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
So we can't hear audio, so what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna play it for council here on my computer, because I have, I have the same one from your website, so I'll just, I'll turn this around, I know it's super small, but, at least then we'll get.
Over 120 years ago, the St. John community came together to help disadvantaged boys. Similar organizations popped up across the country, and eventually came together as one. Girls needed safe spaces too, and we changed to meet their needs. But not every young person identifies as a boy or a girl, so we've changed our name to reflect that. At BGC, no kid or teen is ever turned away, no matter their background, no matter their circumstances. We are the largest dedicated child and youth serving organization in the country. Thousands of staff and volunteers nationwide believe that every single kid deserves a vibrant future. This means we will not allow any child or youth in Canada to be deprived of personal opportunity. Every kid faces different barriers, so we do an awful lot to help them. Does our work have impact? Just ask our alumni. We provide systemic opportunity to children and youth, we help them become their best selves. We cheer them on as they take it from there with confidence and conviction. All they need is opportunity, because opportunity changes everything. Now who's with us? Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. Back to you for a bit of an idea of the V brand, and the reason that formerly known as Boys and Girls Clubs of Canada, chose to do a bit of a refresh with the brand, and we're really excited about that, so. Alright, back to the presentation, our mission. Our mission is to provide safe, supportive places where children and youth can experience new opportunities, overcome barriers, build positive relationships, and develop confidence and skills for life. Our vision is for all children and youth to discover and achieve their dreams, and grow up to be healthy, successful, and active participants in society. Our core values are the foundation of what we do. Belonging, we welcome everyone in a safe, accepting environment based on belonging and positive relationships. Respect, we ensure that everyone, children, youth, families, volunteers, staff, is heard, valued, and treated fairly. Working together, we work together with young people, families, volunteers, communities, and government. Speaking out, we speak out for children, youth, and families, so that we can make our world better. And encouragement and support, we encourage and support every child and youth to play, learn, and grow and achieve their dreams. In a conversation that I had with my Min team a while back, I was trying to find the words to truly describe how vital our core values are to our organization on, at all levels. And my Director of Programs term did best when she described her core values as running through our veins, starting at our hearts. And to me this fit perfectly, because our core values, yes, are definitely actually the programs and services that we offer, but are also at the heart of who we are as individuals and as an organization as a whole. The next slide. I could be here with you all night describing who we are and what we do, but this graphic is us in a nutshell. So as I mentioned earlier, we're operating in Treaty Six Territory in the city of North Battleford. We welcome children and youth from the community and surrounding areas of all financial circumstances, socio-ethnic backgrounds, and abilities. From offering nutrition to before and after school programs, evening and weekend programming, to sports and music, educational programs, and self-esteem and empowerment groups. This is what we offer our community on average over 290 days each and every year. Numerous studies and community feedback have demonstrated that a significant amount of unproductive or unsupervised time outside of school can undermine positive developments. So for six days a week, BGC Battleford provides a safe place to go, positive role models, and quality recreational educational programs. We believe that providing these pro-social activities during non-school hours is vital to our community's children and youth. With the support of our supporters, donors, and funders, the impact we're having is significant. Next slide. Not only young people have the same opportunities to flourish, we see firsthand that many youth, right here in our own community, do not have access to safe, constructive activities and positive guidance when they're outside of school. Our club offers affordable and inclusive after-school care services in the city, lowering barriers for children and youth to participate in programming that provides a safe place to go, positive role models, and quality recreational and educational activities during those critical out-of-school hours. With a $5 annual membership fee, we offer an unlimited drop-in program out of main site, so that's located in the building that you would have seen on a previous slide. Here we provide enriching and a safe environment for the children and youth in our community. The program operates after school from 3:30 PM to 8:30 PM Monday to Friday, as well as Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00. The program allows children and youth ages five to fourteen to learn, so it provides them the opportunity to learn new skills, build friendships, develop healthy habits, and most importantly, it allows them to be kids. Through crafts, activities, and games, members can explore their interests, expand their knowledge, and have fun. And nutrition is a huge part of what we offer, so every day there's an after-school snack, an evening snack, as well as a supper. Through this program, we try to no child leaves hungry. And often our nutrition extends into the homes of our members, as we're often sending food home, food home with our children, so that we can ensure that the families who might be struggling have the support they need as well. We think having the opportunity to participate in pro-social activities is a right for children, but also recognize the barriers for families to achieve this. For activities such as hockey, soccer, dance, there often come significant fees made for transportation, as well as a significant amount of time dedicated to the sport. And this isn't always feasible for families, so it's important that we offer activities such as this to reduce the barriers in getting kids active and involved in sports, as well as other pro-social positive activities such as music. When school is out in July and August, we hope to continue ensuring all children and youth in our community have access to nutrition, fun enriching activities, and caring adults who support them through our summer parks drop-in programs, which are located at three community squash parks here in North Battleford. Next slide. So during the school year, we also offer programs at three additional locations, all within elementary schools within North Battleford. These before-and-after-school programs are registration-based, fee-for-service programs that operate out of a classroom within each school. Unstructured play helps kids prepare for their big day at school, and the home repair, fitness, arts and crafts, and of course a nutritious snack help kids end their day in a great way. Throughout the months of July and August, we operate our Summer Adventure Day Camp, again, which is a registration-based, fee-for-service program, and it's offered Monday to Friday out of our main site. Our Summer Adventure Day Camp secure families for access to affordable programming for young children during the summer months while they're at school. The camps are highly active and feature weekly things, field trips, and plenty of outdoor fun. We also provide camp participants daily snacks, as well as lunches, all free of charge. Next slide. So you should see the slide titled 2019 by The Numbers. This is a snapshot of our organization in 2019, and I'm showing it to you since it's kind of our most normal year that we've had recently. As you'll see, offering services out of four locations, the impact we had was significant. We served over 33,000 snacks and meals to our 411 members. Our members visited us in different capacities over 32,000 times in 2019 alone. Whether it was after school, on a non-school day, for supper, or during a special program, the impact is huge. You'll note, though, the cost to provide this is also significant, with costs to offer these programs and services ranging over $2,300 a day. Next slide. We all know my 2020 with heart, each and every one of us continued to try to navigate our lives during the COVID-19 pandemic. March 17th, 2020, was the date we suspended all programs and services, and that's by far one of the hardest days of my life. I knew how much our children, youth, and families, as well as our community relied on us, and now more than ever, they would need our support. Within one week of suspending our programs due to COVID-19, our club launched a pandemic-supported service to continue to safety meeting the needs of our community and deliver over four pallets and packages of meals, alcohol materials, hygiene products, PPE, and other necessities. Next slide. We saw a need and knew it was a grave one. A parent explained just how desperate their situation was and showed her appreciation for our pandemic support, at least by noting, "My kids are no longer complaining about being hungry," and how gut-wrenching is that statement. The COVID-19 pandemic has intensified and exposed serious systemic issues, forms of racism, and other forms of discrimination to inequity, and the far-reaching effects of poverty. Researchers show that children who face racism are more likely to be victims of poverty and abuse, have more interactions with child welfare and the justice system, and experience challenges at school. Next slide. I really wish there was a way we could show you this video, I don't think it's on our website.
Nicole, maybe if you can, if you can send it to me afterwards, I'll circulate it around the council, if that's okay, just to save, to save the time.
Yeah, absolutely. So systemic opportunity, opportunity changes everything. And for over a century, Boys and Girls Clubs have removed barriers and created opportunities for all young people of low backgrounds. We see firsthand the effects of systemic problems, and we know the solution is investing in young people, in communities, in platforms that give young people a voice. We know the solution is systemic, and here at BGC Battlefords, we offer equity, acceptance, support, and opportunity to those in and around the Battlefords. Next slide. So now, for the reason I'm joining you all tonight, I'm wondering how us at BGC Battlefords can provide opportunities to the children, youth, and families of Larrangie area. Next slide again. Unfortunately, I've never been to Larrangie, so I took some time to take a look at your website and came across your strategic plan, and noticed a couple of strategic priorities that we might be able to assist you in achieving, and being introduced new and innovative recreational programming using existing assets, and introduce new community engagement processes focused on youth. Next slide. But first, I would love to know what you need. Am I still the host? Because someone has entered the waiting room, and I'm not sure if I have to be the one to admit them?
You might want to admit it, Nicole.
Alright, alright. So, yeah, that's why I'm here today, is to see, you know, what, what your community needs. These are what you'll see on your screen, are just a few examples of things that they might be able to help provide for the community, whether it's for after-school programs, you know, drop-in programming, recreational programming, summer camps, nutrition programs, whatever it may be, these are just some examples of things that we might be able to help you with. Bye. So how can we help and what are next steps?
Well, yeah, yeah, of course you can.
Just to get a quick history, I know Nicole from almost two hundred days in North Battleford, about, for example. I've been dialoguing with Nicole since I got here, and one of the needs I saw in the community was not just to tell her Larrangie, but the rejoinder, just an organization like Boys and Girls Club that's apolitical, is not there for any certain reason other than to help kids and stuff like that. And so that's the reason Nicole is presenting tonight, is to, to give council some information. I have talked to a couple people in the community that have been affiliated with efforts in the past to get a Boys and Girls Club off the ground here in Larrangie, and where they struggled was the volunteers to sit on the board of directors and get a ground, you know, an actual club going. And Nicole is explaining to me is, she's received approval to establish a bit of a branch office of the North Battleford office, so kind of get it going in the short term, boots on the ground, activities going, all that stuff, and it's not gonna happen overnight, so it eliminates the need to start up with a grassroots board of directors. In the long term, it would be great to have the, a club set up over the long term, but just to get some short-term progress going. And I just want to highlight too, there's a couple companies I've already reached out to on this that Nicole's got some funding from in North Battleford that are open to the idea of getting behind this as well, and council recalls. One of them is RBC Divisional Securities, and their proposal, they have a program that's through the Boys and Girls Club, that is designed for high school students, so there's opportunities there. And I think it's something, I think it's a very good organization, and that's why Nicole shared today, just to give council some background information. And like I said, it's not necessarily geared towards just the town, I think it could be a great tri-community effort, and just with the influence they have in the, the Battlefords, and the fact that she runs, Nicole runs her crew on a shoestring budget up there, and she gets a lot of funding from corporate sponsors up there and stuff like that, it's just thought I'd give a good information in it for council today. I liked it.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate your time and your sharing of information, Nicole, and I definitely would prefer that there is a need here, there has been a need for a very long time. We've been waiting for a youth center for many, many years, and for whatever reason, this has come to fruition. I know that this doesn't necessarily mean we'll have a youth center, but it does need, it needs a specific demographic, but it does need support and an outlet, so.
Speaking of a youth center, are you referring to, you know, the older youth demographics, of those eighteen, teenage, minors?
Yes, yes, yes.
And do you have programming already for the younger, for the younger children, or is that an area of need as well?
Well, we have a program that the schools typically offer, but that's school-based, and obviously during COVID, that has been next to impossible. There is some programming from one of our local friendship centers, but it's a very minimal program. Like we don't, we have early years programming through Children North and Kids First North, but that's, you know, like very, very early years. But we don't have anything for the kids that maybe need that outlet, like I'm thinking age ten to eighteen. There are some organized sports activities that are starting up again, but again, it's just specific pockets, right? It's not like, there's not a drop-in center, there's not like food necessarily available, or a safe place to go for a while, for whatever reason.
Yeah. You mentioned the different sports and activities that might be starting up, are they accessible to, to everyone? Or is there, you know, like in North Battleford, I mean, dance and hockey and soccer, the fees are crazy, you know?
Yeah, yes and no, yeah, yes and no, like your kids sport, they'll fund, they'll win cup, but again, like you, you need the equipment, you need to register by a certain date, you need transportation to and from the activities, and we don't have a proper transportation system, so sometimes that is a barrier.
And another thing, like to, to also kind of tie into like the local sports, I do know a lot of our community organizations in comparison to a lot of urban settings, we are extremely competitive on fees. You know, a lot of our coaches are volunteer-based, our uniforms are relatively cheap for the Larrangie minor hockey and the figure skating club to be able to use. So I mean, we, we do, and that, those savings are quite often downloaded to the, to the user as well. So we do have a very good community recreation desire, and I think that the biggest issue that we have here is all of our sporting events, whether it be golf, hockey, track and field, cross-country, football, you name it, typically has the same, if not very similar, volunteer bases that consistently go out to that, and we're seeing a lot of volunteer burnout. And if there was an opportunity for, you know, some capacity building and having somebody, you know, being a helping hand to a lot of the already great work that's happening here, would be really awesome, as well as providing some additional recreation and some variety as well, just so the kids aren't stuck to, you know, one place from, you know, three o'clock to five, and then from five to seven, they have to go across town, and from seven till nine, they go somewhere else, you know? So if it, if it was to centralize and build the capacity of our recreation, not only in the town but the region, I think that would be something that would be a really good thing for any organization to be able to come in and help us here.
I think from the standpoint, Nicole, I think from the standpoint, I've been in the town just for over two years, and the moment that I got here, I noticed that there was sort of a lack of coordination and sort of communication between all the programmers that we had in the, in the tri-communities, I'll say. Because we have the, we have the assets, we absolutely have the places to do it. It's just like some of our other councils have said, it's the burnout, right? So it's sort of figuring out a way to continually bring up that next generation of volunteers and empower our, our young youth to take on those roles, because that burnout, I mean, is, is sort of seen everywhere. It's not just a Larrangie problem. But we always do have those key ones that do come into the community, and then the way, just the way it works is because we're very transient, that every, you know, probably one to three years, or one to five years, there's a, there's a turnaround. And so I think that that's something that we could definitely use some help with, and maybe some ideas around how we can sort of solve that for us. Because we, we have all the assets, like even when the schools allow us to do some programming again, we have. we have amazing facilities, um, but it just requires getting people to, to get to do it, right? So, uh, but.
Um, yeah, so I, I've had the privilege this year of substitute teaching at Northern Lights School Division schools. And definitely see where there could be some strengthening of, you know, the existing programs. The school, the school division does an amazing job, um, with their nutrition programs and providing, uh, you know, as much support as they can to the students. But there are a few gaps that I've seen. I've been in classrooms for pre-K all the way up to grade eleven. And I think, you know, on your slide, you've put positive role models. And that is something I think that is definitely, um, a need in this community, because I see how some students are, are really searching for, uh, someone to, to follow. Um, so those kinds of things, and then the non-school day programs and before and after-school programs, I think would definitely benefit, uh, parents, working parents, uh, that can't afford childcare, uh, before and after, or are burdened to afford that, um, to be able to support, you know, the, those that need to be at work. And then also provide safe spaces for the children who be, that may not be at a, you know, an expensive daycare or similar.
So you, you've mentioned a couple of things that kind of hit home for me. One is that you have, uh, a group of really great volunteers that have done a lot of amazing work in your community, but they're starting to feel the burnout. And that you have a, a population of young people that would hopefully fill those roles. And as we know, if youth feel valued and that their voices are heard and that they're empowered and that they have people to walk alongside them, they absolutely can get to those places where they're the leaders in the community, doing the volunteer work so that it relieves the burden, you know, of the small core group. So Boys and Girl, or I shouldn't say Boys and Girls Clubs, BGC Battlefords, um, can absolutely assist in that. And that's something that we try to do here in our community with our youth program. We have a youth program for those youth ages eleven to fourteen. And I've always wanted to expand our membership group, our membership age, because we know that young people in our community, if given those safe places, go on the positive role models, and those pro-social activities, they can do really great things. But when they lack those things, there can be some really not great things that happen. Um, before joining the club here, almost six years ago, I was a probation officer for youth. And I get a little choked up talking about it, but I know that every young person that I worked with, um, had they had a place like the Boys and Girls Club, or had they felt like they belonged at the Boys and Girls Club, they may have made very different life choices, and, and they may not be serving provincial or federal prison sentences right now, you know? So, um, that's, I'm, I'm really passionate about working with youth, I'm really passionate about working with communities. It sounds like you have a, a great community that has a lot of strengths already. You just need someone to maybe kind of collaborate and bring everyone together.
And, and I think there's a greater need during the summer months, because during the school year, like the schools are consistently provided, going to be programmed and programming. Um, right now, with COVID regulations, all that started to loosen up. So that's maybe why, um, councillor Chara says that there's a gap right now, but if it's COVID, right? So I guess the other important piece around that is, um, we need to figure out a way to be able to support underprivileged youth that might not have parental transportation to and from activities and events that might be happening in the community, right? Because yes, we have a lot of activities in the community, but as Mayor Ruchichan mentioned, um, it's the same volunteers. So it's the same volunteers, and often it's the same, um, participants in every single left community, because those are the kids whose parents are able to give them a ride to and from, purchase the equipment that they might need to be involved in something, right? So there's a little bit of, um, work we need to do in that realm as well.
We have seen great success at offering those types of activities. So we offer a hockey program, soccer, lacrosse, um, we have music lessons, we have a number of those special programs, and we offer them free of charge, and we provide all of the equipment. And we pay for the ice rental and the turf rental and all of those things, just to ensure that every child truly has access to hockey and truly has access to soccer, should they choose to. You know, and I think that's really important. You mentioned kids sport, you mentioned the applications and things like that. And some kids that they perform is a barrier in and of itself. Right? Um, so, yeah, I think there's, there's huge opportunities.
So, um, just in the essence of time, because, uh, we, we do have a full agenda here. And I'm going to give councillor Watt the last, uh, uh, opportunity to speak. And then, um, I believe that you've extended, um, the possibility of coming up to, to meet with us. So, um, I'll formally, you know, offer an invitation as well on top of that. Um, because I think that there's, there's a true passion for that here. Um, and so I'll just pass it to councillor Watt, and then we'll, we'll say thank you and good night.
Thank you. I guess what I want to bring to the table is over the last thirty years, I had the privilege of raising, uh, my family in LaRanche. And one asset that LaRanche has, huge asset, is the youth. All you have to do is show up at a hockey game. We have got kids that are, that overwhelm the rink. It's great to, to see that, the, the young atmosphere. A question I have for you, um, because we mentioned Kids' North, different programming. Can you name a couple of different programs that, that you're working with, that, sorry, that the Boys and Girls Club of Battleford is working with? Just because I want to see some cohesion here. You know what I'm saying? And, and if you could just illustrate to us how you have the abilities of working with these different groups and, and pulling all this together.
Yeah, so I sit on, uh, so I guess there's a number of ways. So the first thing I'll mention is that I sit on two, uh, large community networks. One is a youth network, and one is an early childhood network. And that's an opportunity where all the youth-serving organizations or all of early childhood, uh, serving organizations get together on a monthly basis and, and, you know, update one another on services, programs that we're offering, and ensures that we aren't duplicating services and that we are exploring partnerships that might be available, you know, whenever we can. Um, so that's one way. But we wouldn't be here in the community for as long as we have than if it wasn't for the successful partnerships that we've had. So we offer a number of programs in partnership with other organizations and community groups within and around the Battlefords. So we offer a program that's called To Be Boys, and that's because of a partnership with our local Sexual Assault Center. We work with our, um, Child, Youth, and Childhood Addiction Services. We work with, you know, there's Catholic services, we work with our school boards. Um, there's a variety of different organizations and groups that we work with in order to provide programming. We don't want or have the capacity, uh, to duplicate, you know, programs and services. So if there's a way to partner, we absolutely make it happen. So I think collaboration is really important, I think working together is really important. And ultimately, it comes down to the four values that I have mentioned earlier in front of us, working together and speaking out.
Excellent. Thanks, Nicole. Did you answer one of that? Okay, it's good. Okay. Um, Nicole, thank you so much. Um, I think you're absolutely right, and we, that's what we do have here. We have a lot of great organizations, but I'm not sure that that collaboration is really as streamlined as it potentially can be. Um, and that would be a great place to look at. So, um, yeah, if you're able to come up, that would be fantastic. Um, the invitation is always going to be there. Uh, and I think that there's some, some clear indications from council here that this is what we want to explore and really help our communities with. So thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you very much for having me. And I think if on your next slide, you'll see where you can find us. I have my email address there, my phone number, address, different social media, or website, things like that. So if any of you have any questions or want to chat further, please do not hesitate to reach out. And I'll be in touch to kind of visit in the near future.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you for having me.
And you too. Bye.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on to the next delegation, which Saskatchewan Housing Corporation with Roger is a director.
Me too. I'm going to work on that post, but.
Yeah. Well, probably have to pull you off that post, Nicole.
Yeah. Thank you.
No, thank you.
I didn't hear leave it, then since the host is up, I'm going to take everyone off.
Hi, Roger. I see that you just unmuted. How are you?
I am good. How are you guys?
Good, thank you. Um, we will, uh, we'll pass the floor, and thank you so much for being here this evening.
Oh, thank you for having me. And, uh, I don't know if I'm supposed to be listening on that presentation, but it sure sounded interesting. I've never heard of that organization before. And that really, uh, sweetened my interest. And, uh, what a great initiative that they're running in, in North Battleford.
Absolutely.
Anyways, um, thank you for, uh, for reaching out to, to us and, um, and, um, having a discussion with regarding housing in, uh, in LaRanche and in the north. I think this kind of got triggered by a conversation I was having with Blue North Executive, uh, a few months ago. And Consul Jordan Gale was, was, uh, at, was at the, uh, meeting and asked that I kind of give a safe presentation, uh, to, to Mayor Council of LaRanche. So, um, I guess just to start out, um, SaaS housing is, uh, we are currently being guided by what we call the National Housing Strategy. It was, uh, it's a, it's a strategy that's a ten-year cost matched funding agreement between the government of Saskatchewan and Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation. Uh, this, this agreement, uh, will result in an investment of almost, uh, five hundred eighty-five million dollars over ten years. And, uh, this is, needs to be cost matched by the, by the province of Saskatchewan. And really, there's, under the, uh, the National Housing Strategy, there's, there's three major initiatives under this, um, under this agreement. Um, what mean what we call the Saskatchewan Priorities, uh, the Canada Community Housing Initiative, and the Saskatchewan Housing Benefit. So I'll, I'll just kind of touch on, I'll touch on, uh, each of those and what, what those priorities are. Um, but before I do that, I'll just, I just want to say that these are, this is kind of work that's kind of new, ongoing for us right now. But of course, we still, uh, we own and operate our, our eighteen thousand housing units across, across the province. Uh, fourteen hundred units, which include fourteen hundred units in north, and I think in LaRanche area, I think we're in the neighborhood of around two hundred units, uh, that's, that's operated by the LaRanche Regional Housing Authority. Um, so the first major initiative that I, that I mentioned was what we call the Saskatchewan Priorities. And this funding, um, under Saskatchewan Priorities supports the regional needs priorities. And this, these are initiatives such as, uh, housing repair, construction, or affordability support. Um, the flexibility under, under the Saskatchewan Priorities allows the Saskatchewan Housing Corporation to focus on programs to address the current housing needs and to adapt programs to align with the government priorities, priorities such as the Disability Strategy, Mental Health and Addiction Action Plan, and the Poverty Reduction Strategy. Um, some repairs that some of you might be familiar with, uh, over the years that we've delivered and has funded under this, under the Saskatchewan Priorities is, uh, our Home Repair Program, where, uh, people of low income can access funding for, for repairs to their home. Uh, the Shelter Nasser Program, which assists victims of significant personal violence by providing new shelter spaces and maintaining existing shelters in good repair. Uh, our Rental Development Program, where we provide funding to nonprofit groups, cooperative groups, private sector to respond to community housing needs and building of affordable housing. And our Trades Training Initiative, where we work with the, uh, Northern Lights School Division and construct housing units, um, in areas, give the youth opportunity to have, uh, have some ability to, and exposure to the trades of, of building a home. So, um, there is one, I think, that was planned for this coming year in LaRanche, actually, at the trades training. But because of COVID, I think it has to get pushed back for, for one year down the road here. But, um, we have done some of this in LaRanche in the past, and it's been a very successful program, uh, for the north and for the youth. Um, the other, uh, initiative under the Nationalistic Strategy is, uh, the Canada Community Housing Initiative. And what that is, is it's, uh, for the protection and regeneration and expansion of our existing community housing. So our, our housing stock, our eighteen thousand housing units that I, that I spoke about, um, protection and regeneration of, of that stock, as well as stock that is owned by third-party groups. Um, so we want to focus on some capital, cap, major capital improvement projects, uh, on our units, uh, throughout the province. And we, I know in, uh, in the coming years, in the next two, three years, we have some, some plans to do some, um, regeneration of some, of our existing housing stock in the north. Um, and our last, um, initiative under the Nationalistic Strategy is what we, we call the Saskatchewan Housing Benefit. And this is a, a benefit that offers direct-to-household benefit, provides affordability to support low-income renters who are paying a high proportion of their income towards shelter costs. Um, eligible clients receive a flat benefit amount based on a one- or two-bedroom, one, two, or three-bedroom, three-bedroom plus house. Um, and the benefit can range between, uh, one hundred fifty dollars to two hundred fifty dollars per month. Um, individuals that are living in subsidized housing wouldn't, wouldn't be eligible for this, uh, this type of program. It'd be individuals that are renting from the private, private landlords and have affordability issues would be, uh, clients that would be able to access that program. Um, so that's, that is, uh, kind of in a, a short summary, what we are doing here with, with, as Saskatchewan housing. Um, we, we often like to, and regularly like to meet with, with northern stakeholders, with, meet with Blue North, Blue North Executive on a regular basis to stay, stay in touch with what's going on, uh, in the north. And, um, we did have a meeting finally with them, a virtual meeting with, with the North Executive. And, um, I know Bruce mentioned that once, uh, at math, once they, uh, begin having meetings and gatherings again, that they'd like to have a housing presentation and, and go and, uh, talk to them again, kind of what the housing needs are for, for the north. Always interested to stay in, in touch with what's, what's going on up there for sure. Any questions that, uh, that anyone might have about, about the corporation, what's going on in, in the north and, uh?
Hi, yes, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, can't hear. Are there any plans to, um, increase housing available in the LaRanche area?
Um, so we, we do have, um, under the Saskatchewan Priorities, as I mentioned, we do have what we call the Rental Development Program, where, um, third-party groups have the ability to apply for, for capital funding to, to construct, uh, affordable housing. Um, we issue an expression of interest the fall of every year, and we will be issuing another one this fall, where groups can, uh, can apply, um, for, for a housing project in, in, in a, in a community. The other thing I, I would like to mention on, on that note, when you guys are talking about, talking about that, and, uh, I've had conversation with, um, individ, with, with some of the housing directors of, of the Maintenance of Saskatchewan, and they're, they're offering similar funding to what we are. And what I would, what I always encourage, and what we, working with the Maintenance would always encourage is, is to leverage the different funding pools that are available. So you could very well, as a group in the community, could access funding to the Maintenance of Saskatchewan. And, um, you know, if they, if they are, um, like the idea of what kind of housing project to develop, and the needs are there and so on, and it matches up with what Saskatchewan Housing Corporation has, this, this, between the different funding pools gives opportunity to, to leverage more and more dollars, um, to, to develop housing, because it's all, it's capital funding what is what we're, these programs, uh, provide. And the less, um, amortization cost that a group has, they could put that towards operating, operating the project.
So, so Roger, do you mean like the Provincial Maintenance Housing Corporation, like PMHC? Is that who you're referring to when you say Maintenance?
Um, it's actually, it's actually, um, funded now to, uh, is the Maintenance of Saskatchewan has their own housing, housing branch.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Um, so I guess my, my question to you was based on the fact that currently we do have a housing shortage in LaRanche in terms of rentals and that sort of thing. I foresee that, uh, the demand increasing due to, you know, the wellness center that's going to bring in a whole bunch of new employees to the community, the expansion of the long-term care, um, center that's going to bring more and more. the expansion of the long-term care um center that's going to bring more employees to the region, and the potential of some of the gold mines in the area which will also bring more employees to the region. So I think that within the next five years, we're gonna be bursting at the seams if we're not almost there now, right? So housing, I think, will be a a serious issue. Like right now, when we have new employees for for whatever branch, uh you know, that they work in, they struggle finding rentals.
Right, yeah, so um that would be out of the domain of of what we, the type of housing that we provide where where it's uh low-income social housing.
Okay.
So people that would be living, working in those sectors would would not likely um qualify for the housing that we provide.
So what is your threshold for income in terms of providing household to a family? What is the maximum threshold?
I think it's fifty-six thousand.
Fifty-six thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Yeah.
The second one question, uh Roger, uh what's the impact of the high building cost? What's that? How's that impacted your programming?
Well, we're just beginning to see it, Joe. Um, we uh we have this this expression of interest that I that I tell you talked about here in this um rental development program. So we do this annually every year and so the 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 groups that the groups that were approved from last year's expression of interest are probably just, you know, because of all the developmental permits and all the building plans and so on, have had to get that, they're actually just starting to begin building now. And it is causing us problems uh for sure because um you you would know the high cost of the high cost of materials that that are there. And unfortunately, the groups are gonna either figure out a way about about coming up with some more capital holders or else we're gonna have to reduce that a project, the the size of the project by a unit or two. Frankly, just to be able to afford, to be able to undertake the project. That's how that's how I uh foresee that to 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 overcome the problem.
Uh, Councilor Kell?
Uh, hey Roger, it's Jordan. Uh.
Hi, Jordan.
We did uh we did have a conversation briefly at New North and I wanted to make sure that, you know, council heard a lot of the same things that I had heard at the New North Executive meeting there. Uh, which is why I was, you know, reached out to Stephen to get you here and I'm glad that you could take the time and uh and and join us here tonight. Um, one of the things that, you know, particularly struck me and maybe I was, I I misheard it. I do, I know that Zoom sometimes with the cutting out of voices. Uh, I might not hit right down the exact proper note. Uh, but one of the things that I remember of note that when we had the discussion was that um in some communities, it's not, the Saskatchewan uh Housing Authority does not build based on what they think is needed. It's based on this expression of interest that is issued every fall. Um, and that would and the question that I would have in that regard is um when you were talking about the rental development program, um is this a like a third-party builder that um you know, goes into this expression of interest? Does that have to be a municipality? Um, or is that basically a general contractor in the area who can say, I would like to build four housing units on the this three chunks of property? And then like just can you explain a little bit on the process on how um a Saskatchewan Housing Authority house becomes uh a part of our community in in today's process?
Sure, so um we've done it a few different ways. Um, there's most most often it's done through a community-based organization that um is established um or or um begins as a new entity to be able to own and manage housing. And on some, we've worked in other communities where where municipalities have uh have uh created their own entity and and how and their own housing uh uh housing division, so to speak. Uh, I use Pinehouse as an example. They have Pinehouse Housing Corporation. Um, LaLash has what they call Methi, Methi Housing Corporation. Um, those are two examples. A Little Lacrosse, I think, they they have uh the Sakawak Development Corporation. They uh they develop their housing under. So there's different different um, House Narrows is also an economic development corporation that have undertaken and and developed housing. So there's different um ways of approaching this and municipalities have done it or else just interested third-party groups that are um serving those types of clients, um that have an existing entity could also apply for for housing uh to develop the housing under the our expression of interest.
So in in LaRange's case, would that be like the LaRange Regional Housing Authority or would that be, you know, like a let's say, for example, a friendship center or a group of contractors and talent that care about building social housing units here as well?
Um, so it wouldn't be the LaRange Regional Housing Authority because LaRange Regional Housing Authority is an agent of Saskatchewan Housing Corporation and they manage the our housing units that we own on our behalf. So um we are are tied tied together. It would be under, like the friendship centers are another example that have communities that have developed housing under. Um, or it could be a group of individuals, uh like they say, a group of contractors that started as a nonprofit entity to to develop develop their own housing. There's also for-profit people that have that have developed housing um across the across the north, across the province and including LaRange where affordable housing has been developed um in and ready in LaRange.
And and the only other follow-up question I have is, is there a difference in funding models from the Saskatchewan Housing Authority between the affordable housing units and the low-income or social housing units that you were speaking of?
Yes, so the um the the social housing units have a lower income level um to to qualify and it's under the social housing program, so it's based on income thirty percent of of a person's income um is the social housing program. For the affordable housing program, I would describe it as um somewhere between the private market and the social housing rates. So let's just save for conversation, the private market rental in in your community is uh a thousand dollars and our social housing rate is say five hundred dollars. I would I would describe it for the housing kind of being in between, say, seven hundred dollars, seven fifty. And I'm just using numbers here just for conversation. To describe, just to describe kind of what that affordable uh rate radius.
So does the Saskatchewan Housing Authority have a program to build affordable housing units or is it just the social housing units that are funded?
It's just for the the Saskatchewan Housing, Saskatchewan Housing Corporation who um who are are which the housing authorities are part of, are are the entity that manages our social housing units. So our our program is a social housing.
Okay.
Under the housing authorities.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the table for Roger? Okay, Roger, thank you so much for your time tonight. I really appreciate the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me and uh there's any other uh things that come up and if there's any questions about new development for housing and stuff that is expression of interest, I would encourage you to contact us.
And that's and that that next intake is in the fall, you said, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Do you have a a rough date?
Um, likely in November.
November, okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Roger. Appreciate it.
All right, have a good have a good evening, guys.
You as well. Okay, uh so that does it for our delegations tonight. We're gonna move on to reports from administration this year or reports. Um, the first one that's on the agenda for that is the request to waive the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fees for the Northern Lights Hockey Development. Um, do you guys want some? Okay, thanks.
On that, there's uh welcome Yadi in at uh David Lake, I saw him.
Yeah.
By um, I forget the date, we have.
Last year.
Yeah. Perfect. Hi, Tony.
Hi.
Would you like to take it away?
You betcha, yeah. Um, this issue report is for the um requesting to waive the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fees for the Northern Lights Hockey Development Inc. Um, so there's a little bit of background information there about what the other communities are doing, um other S G H L communities are doing, uh what they've done. Um, some of them have not made decisions yet, um but all that information is in your report there. Um, I've attached the letter from the Northern Lights Hockey Dev- Development Inc. for you. Um, our recommend administrative recommendation is based on the two thousand twenty-one budget uh set by council. It is recommended that the town of LaRange not waive the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Northern Lights Hockey Development Inc. fees. The alternatives to that are to waive um the fees or to waive only a partial amount of the fees as determined by council. The reason why we didn't recommend that is because it's not uh it doesn't fall within the two thousand twenty-one budget parameters that were set by council.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I do, but I'll open up the floor first for anyone else that has questions. Councilor Sharm?
Um, how how many times has or how many years have council uh been requested to waive fees or forgiven some or all fees?
Um, I couldn't tell you all of the times, um but I do know that in my history here, uh which has been fourteen and a half years, there's been twice that uh it has been uh the debt has been waived and only one year that the fees have been uh entirely waived at the beginning of the year.
Controversy.
Hi, Tony, Viviana here, uh Rizartan. So ballpark figure per year, how much revenue is generated by youth users or groups that work with youth in the ring? Like just ballpark, do you know? Like against skating club, hockey, I don't know who else?
Um. Well, the are are you talking about the revenue from the Mount Haglen Uniplex?
Yeah, well, from the, uh, this group is asking to have their fees waived for the Uniplex, correct?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So what other groups that cater to youth um are involved using the Uniplex and how much total revenue does that generate a year, right? Because I know skating for sure, but I don't know if there's other groups?
Yeah, for sure. Uh, minor hockey is one of the user groups and we budget, um, these are numbers off the top of my head, so.
Yeah, no, just ballpark, just to have an idea.
Um, approximately fifteen thousand dollars in revenue is what we usually receive from them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, depending on the years. Uh, and figure skating is another user group. Um, and they're generally just a little bit higher than minor hockey. Um, and another user group would be um the Crusher's Hockey League in previous history. Um, they've been around um ten, anywhere between nine thousand and eleven thousand. It just depends on how many teams are in the league.
But is that a youth, is Crusher's a youth league or is it an adult league?
Oh, no, that's an adult league.
Yeah, no, just ask me about youth, because most adults have a job and can probably afford to pay, right? But I'm just thinking about youth.
For sure. Um, yeah, that's, those are the two biggest groups of the users of the arena.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions for I don't? No, okay. Um, Tony, I have a question and I mean, this isn't maybe something that you can answer, uh but seeing how this is coming that has, it's been directed to um the Recreation Department. Um, the, as far as I understand it, the S J H L received, um, the twelve teams received a million dollars from the government of Saskatchewan this past year. Um, has there been any sort of indication where that was used to to help in a situation like this? Um, I also know just from doing a quick Google um search that the government in Canada also had emergency COVID nineteen funding um that they that they could have applied for as well in this situation. Do you know if that was potentially applied for as well?
I'm not sure about the federal funding if it was applied for. Um, I do know that the provincial money did um get divvied up into the teams. I'm not uh privy to what that uh money was put towards. Um, I do know that um North Battleford, um, the team, uh, before they have any future negotiations with the city, the city has asked them to provide them with what they did, uh, what they are, what they spent that money on from the province.
Okay, so that that might be something that we need to be considering if um because I I don't know, like it's, I I'm I'm here with you when you say with with your recommendation as far as that goes because um it's it's revenue that affects our budget, right? Um, moving forward, especially with some of our recreation stuff that we're trying to push at the moment. Um, that's my personal take and I will will do a bit of a a thought or sort of a conversation about that. Um, but also my next question for you, Tony, is if if this was something that council was to consider, do you believe that there would be, well, it's not necessarily a avalanche, but that these other user groups are then gonna come forward asking for the same sort of treatment?
Um, nothing has been made uh available to me in writing from those user groups, so I'm not sure if they would or if they would last year.
Is that?
Um, it it was not, we did not take it to council, asking for the fees to be waived for the minor hockey and for figure skating.
Okay.
As administration.
Okay, got it.
So last season being awash, was there no fees collected for last year? From the ice?
I'm sorry, Joey didn't catch that.
Pardon me?
He didn't, she didn't catch what you said there. Just repeat what you said there, I don't.
I didn't.
I said, uh, with uh last season being awash, uh, were there any fees collected at all for from the icewolves?
No, last year council waived the fees, waived the two thousand and twenty-two thousand, twenty-one season.
All fees, so.
All fees.
Okay, um, is there any other questions for Tony while we have her? No, okay, so we kind of, um, for me personally, um and council, you have, I I think that I need more information before we go forward with any sort of because I I personally agree with your recommendation, Tony. Um, we're sort of falling a little bit too much on this, it's COVID's fault, it's COVID's fault. And we, and in my opinion, council also did do um a huge favor for the user groups last year. Um, but on the flip side of that, I will say that the icewolves do contribute as as it states in their letter. Um, and I only have this letter to go go on, is that there is a huge contribution to our communities um as sort of a central uh place where people go to, you know, congregate and it's it's a great thing for our community and I understand the cost in that. But I'm just really curious to know where that funding that was given by the government was used. Um, especially during a time when we had to, I mean, I think not just the hockey club, but there was a lot of a lot of nickel and diming to make things happen and work. Um, so I'm curious to know where that went and why they are now asking for that to be waived um to make it a successful season, right? Because it's not something that I want to see fold, but I think maybe there can be some other creative ways um going around that. And and not to mention, um, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Um, and I also appreciate you bringing up uh here calling um about the federal grant that might be available. It has you know, it has all other avenues been exhausted before coming to us or are we like a first kick at the can?
So I I think um I think if we can, Tony, um and through administration as well, if we can just try to get a little more information brought back to us for for next meeting. Um, Councilor Sharm?
I personally don't need to and I would I would put a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation.
Right.
Because I I've seen the debate at council's previous.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you know, there's there's staunch supporters and staunch uh non-supporters.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but having having the team, the benefit is there um if it brings revenue to the town and, you know, maybe a half a million dollars in money spent or created in LaRange. I don't know what that means exactly, but I I'm not sure that, I don't know, I would have to see a breakdown of that to to believe that for sure. Um, with the amount of, like, are they counting the the offset cost of building homes and
Right.
you know, all of those things that the community contributes. I I don't know. But I don't believe that a team that charges, you know, ticket prices should be, you know, it's a revenue generating. But I don't believe that a team that charges, you know, ticket prices should be, you know, it's a revenue generating operation and I think if it's not generating enough revenue to be solvent, have they talked to Airline? How much does Airline benefit? You know, it's, it's, it's that kind of question. So I think I'm happy to continue, um, digging for information, but I think that as a municipality, is this the taxpayer's responsibility to subsidize? Or is this a revenue generating tenant of the Uniplex?
Yeah, no, I, and I, I, I agree with you on that and I'll come to accept their, um, Counselor, uh, Vereski. Um, there, there's no other possibilities for us to generate any revenues from those games or anything. Everything goes back to the ice world completely, right? The only way that we generate revenue is from their ice fees and the usage of the facilities, that correct?
Mm-hmm.
In their current contract lease agreement, that's how that's set up, that's correct.
Right, so like to me, again, that's, that's another sticking point, that we don't benefit at all by anything that goes on in there and there, and then we're still ask, they're still asking us to provide more proofing. When to me, you, if you just start thinking outside the box a little bit more about how you can start generating more from us, but I mean, that's it's sort of worth it, that, go ahead.
Yep. I guess, uh, that was the question I was gonna have, but I'll just respond to that. The fact that indirectly we don't get revenue back to the town, however, when they spend six hundred and seven thousand dollars in the community, I, that's a big impact. Uh, but I guess my, my question was, what's their current position there? Are there any arrears or is there a wing to the town at this point?
No, last year in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one season, they approached council to forgive their debt history. And council did that and waived their two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one, um, user agreement. So they, they currently owe the town zero dollars.
How, how much was that debt that was waived? Do you know that, by chance?
I do know it, I don't know what else off the top of my head, but it's.
Just ballpark. Sorry to put you.
Twenty three thousand.
Okay. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of on board where, where Counselor Charah, um, is sitting with that, because if this is gonna be a constant thing, when maybe there needs to be a, a different structuring in the way that it's done, cause otherwise what it is, is it's just that each one of us own a part of their ice world, essentially like from our taxes, right? So.
Sure. Um, I would like to see a breakdown where the money has gone, um, and also, you know, like, I'm willing to look at something like this, maybe not the whole thing, because it is an important thing within our community. Um, I know not everybody goes to the game, but I know, um, you know, for a lot of families out there, that's their, that's their weekly or two times a night during the week that they do go out, spend some time together. The energy in there is awesome. And, uh, so yeah, it, it's, I, I think it is an important thing within the community, but you know, looking at other ways of getting money, like new mayor Colin had pointed out through the federal government, um, have they exhausted that? And, uh, I just, I need some more information. I'd like a breakdown of where the money's been spent.
You're, you're referring to the provincial money, right?
The provincial money, yes, please, ma'am. If there was no hockey last year, it, then which?
Sorry, I gotta Counselor Vereski now.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I it's, it's, it's a difficult decision based on the past. It's a struggle. I mean, it's a struggle across, across and but the benefits are there for the communities and, and I think back before the team was here and, and minor hockey was struggling and and, uh, you know, the numbers were down and the, but when the ice world came, they had role models, they, all of a sudden the, the, the kids were, were more involved in hockey and, and, and Little, Little Ice Wolves, you know, and this, and, and see the kids at the rink, you know, that, that's important, like, uh, so is it really about the money? You know, I mean, it's not a lot of money, fifteen thousand more money, but I I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we, that we forgive fifty percent.
Okay, we're gonna do, uh, last here too, and then the request will be for more information, um, and then that, that'll give us a little more information before we take it to council. So accompany Counselor, I'm sure, and then with, and then I'll come to Counselor.
Okay. Am I, am I incorrect in my understanding that, um, SJHL and the Ice Wolves are a private organization? They're not a public body?
They were, they were, they were started by public dollars.
But they are, they are a for-profit organization, correct?
No, to be correct for chemistry, they are a separate, they are a nonprofit, like they, like most of the clubs do not make money.
Right.
Right? If not, uh, all of them, like they just really goodbye every year. So the one I can speak confidently is that Battleford is a community-based organization.
Uh, just my point with that is, what business is it of ours to pry into their finances? They're making a request of the town, it's not our organization, it's their organization to do with their finances what they will. And I don't think it's any of our business to be asking for a breakdown of where they used what money. If they exhausted their resources, they exhausted their resources and then they're coming to us, but we don't, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to be questioning where they've spent their money. They are coming to us asking for forgiveness of the part of the business that deals with the town. And I think from a maturity standpoint of a municipality, we can look at the, the greater picture, but there's, I don't know, some of the detail that we're asking for, I think is trivial because it's not our business.
Counselor is?
I just wanted to share that, um, and anyone who knows me knows that I am not a hockey fan for, for many reasons. With that being said, I do see the benefit to the community of having, um, hockey games and I know that my own children have benefited from being able to attend hockey games. And I know that the Ice Wolves often contribute free tickets to the schools and a lot of kids at Northern wouldn't have the opportunity to go to a hockey game because they can't afford a ticket, are able to go. I also know that Little Raj Ice Wolves players often volunteer at schools or at events, which is fantastic to see. So I would be in favor of a partial subsidy for the Ice Wolves with the recommendation that we also give a partial subsidy to some of the local user groups that are a hundred percent local that serve and work with youth under eighteen, would be my thoughts on that.
So, um, I'll, I'll retract based on what Counselor Charah says. I'll retract my request for that information unless you still would like that information.
Um, I struggle with that because any nonprofit is required to open up their books if asked.
Sure.
Um, you know, just to, you know, if we want to be, you know, open and honest with people, why can't people be open and honest with us? Is the way I look at it, right? Um, and that's just my feeling on it. If council feels that they don't need looking at books, I'm fine with that. And then we can make our decisions based on what we know at hand.
Sorry to interrupt you, man. I love that. We're good?
So we need a motion?
I was gonna say, as a, as a community of the whole, um, it becomes a good, a recommendation for, for Lord and I would next recommend to council. The, the thing that I will say is that with the, I guess, horizon on the COVID nineteen pandemic, um, with the waiving of the fees from last year and us currently looking at the two thousand and twenty one to two thousand and twenty two year and with July eleventh being the large gathering place again, if all things go as, as planned in the province of Saskatchewan and here in the town, then it is my understanding that the attendance can be back to where it was as if we were back to normal. So for me, if this was a discussion to have in the two thousand and twenty one budget cycle, which September, from the starting of the season to September, it could be as early as August, we put the ice in to start allowing for, um, the team to get ready for that season. We're looking at one quarter of the two thousand and twenty one budget cycle that we have, which will also, by the time we're completed our budget cycle, might even be the first quarter of two thousand and twenty two. If we were to have this discussion properly, it would have been on what we just completed of our two thousand and twenty one budget. So for me, if these requests, and, and, and I'm not saying this is at the fault of the organization, because they might not have known until just now when, when and if this was even going to be possible. Uh, if this is the reason why it's an rigid nature that has come to before us here tonight, then that is, that is fine and fair. But what I would say is that for right now, in, in my opinion, the recommendation that we should go going forward is take no action on the current, um, uh, trial for us, which would default counter the organization of the town of Larrange to follow the proper lease fees that we currently have. So it doesn't require us to vote on the matter if we just don't respond, um, to approve or deny it. Then we just follow the exact same process that we have in the near, near year for any lease at the, uh, in, in our Uniplex. And the only reason why I take that stand this year on, on having a zero percent subsidy, if you will, is the fact that we are, um, we are currently at a place where most of our normal duties will go back to normal starting next month, if everything goes to plan. So it'll be a normal season for our Ice Wolves. And last year when they were struggling, we went as a council above and beyond to support.
To be at zero, right?
To be at zero.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I'm saying, um, but my personal feelings on the matter would be that, um, we continue business as normal. Uh, as, as the rest of the province will be as the total levels currently.
There's nothing saying they couldn't come back halfway through the season if things aren't going right and make another request, right?
Yeah, anybody can do it anytime.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so I guess we still want more information and then?
Yeah, um, I have some more.
So I think that's what we'll do, we'll just, we'll request that more information from administration and then we can, uh, we can make a more sound decision. Government, you're welcome.
I guess the other point is if, if we did, if we did consider a partial, it could come out of next year's budget because of the season goes into twenty in twenty two, so.
Right, which is I think something that you said, right? Like this is something that they could come up with later, right? So, okay. So we'll, so at that point, we're just, we're requesting more information from, from administration. Okay, thanks, Tony, appreciate it. Oh, I guess you're gonna be part of the, you're gonna be part of the next one too?
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving on to the municipal grants to?
Uh, August twenty third.
Oh, um, so I don't really know what to do with that request. Um, is that, when, when do we start those conversations, Tony, about when we're putting the ice in and if that's?
If, if I can jump in on, uh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, no, please.
This is a matter of, of a simple point, but I believe that this is a very operational discussion as to when we put the ice in. Um, and I, I would say that if there has been formal request made of any counselor or, or of the town, that it follows in the actual processes of going into the town to our operations team to, you know, weigh the pros and cons of when that should go in. And if there is any issues following that process or if the process hasn't been followed properly and they would like to reach out to council to fix that, then that's when we would engage in that process. That's just my feeling on the matter.
No, I, I a hundred percent agree with you. It's, it's an operational thing and that's something that Tony will deal with, cause that's, that's your, that's your realm and then that, a report will come to council.
So be the messenger.
Thank you. We'll just put that on the horizon, I guess.
Should we get?
Oh, yeah. Thanks.
Counselor's a lot there. So I, I will express conflict on the children's, uh, festival committee request, so if you want to use that one till the last, to the end, go on for Sean. For the three thousand?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, so moving on to the municipal grants, the community groups two thousand and twenty one, this is the first intake for the year, but it's also our first intake, um, ever. So, um, we're, it's a, there's gonna be a bit of a learning curve here, so, um, but a little bit of the background, the information on February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty one, council approved this policy. Um, so a lot of the information that's in the issue report is directly from that policy. Um, the administrative recommendation is for council to stay within the first intake of the two thousand and twenty one budget of twenty one thousand dollars um, for the municipal grant, uh, for communities. Now, the financial implication for that, um, uh, just because there's twenty one thousand dollars there doesn't mean we have to spend it all. Um, you know, making sure that applications are within, um, the approval criteria and it's just that we don't want to spend more than the twenty one thousand dollars. So if there is carryover, it says, say we only spend ten thousand dollars, if there's carryover, that will move to the second intake for the year. Um, so I would have the application summary spreadsheet for you and I have them let's give it one order, but I'm gonna leave the first one there.
Or, or go ahead and do that one first, I'll skip, I wanna come back and, I don't know, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I can, I'll move on to the Alex Robertson Public Library.
Okay. Sure.
So they're requesting one thousand dollars for their summer reading program. Um, it's very simple. Do you have any questions regarding that?
And it's just, that's just a thousand as stated here, correct? No middle or nothing else?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any more questions on that? I think we're good.
Okay, the next one up is the Long Rice Writers Guild. Um, they are requesting funds, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, to con, conduct a writer's workshop to be facilitated by a published Saskatchewan writer.
Okay, okay. Any questions?
Sorry, Tony, can you say one more time what that one was supposed to be used for?
Uh, to conduct a writer's workshop and it's to be facilitated by a published Saskatchewan writer.
Okay, I don't think there's any questions around that.
Okay. The Larrange Arts Council, um, they are requesting funding for, uh, four thou, four thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, they would like to create a community mural project that will engage community dialogue, employ local artists and create public art. So that's what their ask, their money is going towards creating that.
Where would the mural, mural be, like, with collaboration?
It's not decided yet where it would be, um, that would, that's part of the community, um, dialogue.
Hmm.
Uh, but they did indicate that they do want it downtown.
I know they've been talking about that for a very long time. They've wanted to figure out how to do that.
Okay, any questions around that? Okay, good to go.
All right. The Canadian Dog Sled Challenge, um, which is also the Gateway North Sled Dog Race Association. Um, it's an annual, um, event that ha, is held in the third week of February each year. Um, many of you are, uh, I believe are aware of this. Um, it's, it offers a seventy kilometer six dog event and a three hundred kilometer eight dog event and a five hundred kilometer twelve dog event. Um, the committee is asking for, uh, in-kind donation of uh, twenty five hundred dollars and that is to assist in the assist in the event with, um, that is my apologies, this is a very lengthy one, um. The overall sponsorship is what they are looking for the cash, uh, donation for. And then they're asking for in-kind donation as well, um, for garbage removal, uh, the power panel, which is essentially just a damage deposit of three hundred dollars. And then snow clearing, the snow clearing is the more expensive one there. So they're asking for a cash donation of twenty five hundred dollars for the sponsorship and then the, the rest of the, the in-kind total amount was one thousand four hundred and eighty two dollars and fifty cents. Um, so essentially it would be a donation of three thousand nine hundred and eighty two dollars and fifty cents.
Um, what's, what's our typical, I know that we do, we have provided in-kind, uh, support to that group over the years? What's the typical in-kind support that is offered?
Correct. The same as what they're asking, the garbage removal, the power panel and the snow, uh, snow clearing.
So just the in-kind, so they're just kind of asking to. So just the in-kind, so they're just kind of asking to do the same things they've asked for every year plus a whatever level sponsorship?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so a question I have around this, have they, are they approaching the other two communities or just us? Do we know?
I'm not aware of that. Um, it does state in our. Grant information that the town of Larrange is supposed to be a last resort. Stop, it's not supposed to be a first, you know, a first, the first place to go.
I think the town is a destination of of Larrange because it's a local town.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because it does bring business to the to the pride.
So it's for the in going, the cleaning, the snow and those kinds of things are common.
I don't think there's an unreasonable request for sponsorship, like gold level or whatever they wanna call it.
It it's been missed in previous years just because council previously said that we did not do any end of cash donations. And that's a part of the discussions around the municipal grant program was we could set a budget and then. Decide, so this is part of the ways that we could if we wanted to start. I'd be discussing there.
Yeah, and I I guess at this point, what it is, it's just we're deciding whether what at what amount we want to go to, right? Because as Tony said, we don't have to do the full requested amounts here. Questions? Does anybody have any issue with? With what is requested here?
I don't have an issue with what is requested. My one concern around the snow clearing, right, because this is in winter. What happens if you have like a huge snowfall and we're, you know, our people are busy doing the streets and they can't get to this, right? Like, I don't know, can we commit to that? Is there enough personnel?
Well, okay, I don't counsel me on a priority basis, right? So I mean, obviously, if the town is falling apart and it's got too much snow. That's the reason.
Okay, as long as that understanding is there and that information is given to the group that if there were a snowstorm, the snowstorm would be priority. Town streets is priority.
Okay, does anybody have any issues with that amount? Okay. That's good, Tony, we can move on to the next one.
Which, um, the next one is the Nap Tec Ramble. Nap Tec Ramble. So they're asking for forty one thou- forty one hundred dollars, sorry. The grants funded would be for the purpose of preparing the new Nap Tec Ramble site. Located on com- um, commercially zoned property owned by Colin and Samantha Jolly. For the first musical festival at the new location in August two thousand and twenty one. So, yeah, they are asking for forty one hundred dollars for a cash donation and then in-kind donation as well. You can see that in the in the summary break down there what it all entails. Um, the total in-kind amount. Is nine thousand one hundred and forty one dollars.
So so Tony, where is this property located?
Uh, Potato Lake.
So this is the same location it was at two years ago then, right? Oh, there's another location now. Oh, wow. Okay.
I will say one thing that it's. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable putting municipal dollars towards a private property. Outside of your jurisdiction. Yeah, at outside of the town of Larrange. Um, I'm a hundred percent happy to like to throw support behind the ramble because it's such a great community event. But I'm a little nervous with the in-kind request.
Yeah.
I agree.
And and Tony, just from, uh, I guess a point of interest. Um, in our in our grant program, if I do recall correctly, it doesn't state that we would we would give the entire amount, um, but we could give a portion of. Amount requested. Okay, so it's not like an all or nothing, approve or deny?
That's correct.
Okay.
So another point of interest is I spoke to the president of this organization to find out if they have put in requests. With Arange and also with municipal service, not municipal services, I always get the.
No, it's municipal services.
Right, and they were not aware that they could be asking for this kind of funding through them. And that is exactly where the property taxes go. So to me, um.
Have we ever supported this in the past, this particular event?
Yes, but not in this form because we've never had the this grant performed before, but they have asked us for. I think they can't remember exactly what it was, but they they used mats before, um, they borrowed tables and chairs, I believe.
Fire services offered traffic control.
I'm sorry?
Fire services also offered some traffic control.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there has been some requests from the town. Um, I just don't remember off the top of my head what they all were.
So, yeah, so I mean, that little point of information, just where the geographical location of where this is going to be. Is problematic for me. I I believe that it's a fantastic event. It's and the community absolutely loves it. So I think we kind of have to figure out where we stand as far as what can what what sort of contribution we want to offer for this. That I know that they're they're trying to do everything in their power to make everything fall under the guidelines of. The hundred fifty people, ticket set, like ticket prices and all that, right? So I think that it is gonna be a struggle to put it on, but I don't know. Sorry, Tony.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with sending our equipment out of town in the north of the east. I'm okay with them qualifying for a portion of the grant program, which is obviously gonna benefit. Residents of Larrange, I mean, that they just go in there to do it, but there's a lot of talent that's still that lives in the community, so I have no problem supporting. Financial portion of the grant structure of Larrange, not anything in time.
Uh, I'm super happy to, um, you know, throw a sponsorship level amount of money. At this from that perspective. The in-kind stuff on a private piece of property outside of the jurisdiction is a little. Uh, I'm not comfortable with that, but. It sounds as though from the request that they have a piece of property they'd like to host it on, but it's not prepared for the event. So in the interim, is there a piece of property within the town limits for this year where while they figure out how to prepare that property? Or get this one equity in on it, that we could say, you know, as an in-kind, you can use this property. Is there an appropriate piece of land in the town that we could then? Offer it instead?
Not that we have control or.
No, but, yeah, just as a.
No, no, I'm saying like in in my head, as I go through all of the land.
Well, actually, probably the only area we really thought hard of, but I mean, the outdoor ground would be probably a place.
But that's not our jurisdiction, that's not our, that's what I mean. So like, there are there are places that have parking lots and areas here, but we can't say, yeah, use here because.
If we don't agree to the in-kind, they may look at options, maybe they'll go to the outs and they'll look at that option. So we'll just think of that and and.
Yeah, I I'd like to, if if council is comfortable, I would like to. Round, I don't know if it's appropriate to say to put five thousand dollars, um, financial support on the table. They've only asked for forty one hundred, but they've asked for a lot of other in-kind or forty one hundred plus a couple small things like rubber mats. In addition to that.
Sure, so I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna do, we're gonna go around the table here and we're gonna see where.
We have one left, we have one left, the Larrange Children's Day, which I believe council is our country's.
No, I was gonna, no, I like this one specifically, though, about what we're switching it to, because that's what the request is coming, we've gone down the list and we've said, or do we wanna go through all of them and then?
Well, I would say let's go through all of them and then we'll prioritize them.
Okay, sure.
I think it's best. That is, that's what I, I'm gonna go for.
Sure.
Okay, so we're gonna go around, or I'll have to save my funds for that roundtable.
Okay, go ahead with the last one there, Tony.
Okay, the Larrange Children's Festival. I think that most of that makes sense. In here. Uh, the Larrange Children's Day Inc., um, uh, they have a ask for three thousand dollars. They've decided to cancel this year's event due to COVID. In favor of the of that program, they want to run another program. Such as a bingo card. Um, it's to, their program will support local businesses, increase gambling bonding and increase a lot of the outdoors. Yeah, that's what they would like to do instead of, um, the regular children's festival that occurs on July first.
So the question I have on this, Tony, is the three thousand dollars requested, is this for printing of bingo cards? Is this for distribution? Is this for staff? Did they did they outline that at all?
No, they did. It's, they said that it's solely for, uh. Purchasing local prizes. Um, so they wanna have this bingo card, um, that will have prizes. That can be picked up at the Alex Robertson Public Library and anybody can take part in this. They wanna make it, uh, an event where there's no barriers for anyone. Nobody is disqualified, um, anyone that has in-kind disease symptoms that may not, especially not have a vehicle. They wanna make sure that everyone is included. So, um, they they did make that point of saying that over the years, the children's festival has. Relyed on local businesses and their support and sponsorship and they would like to in this year turn around and. Purchase all of the prizes from the local sponsors that, um, graciously presented in the past.
And so so they're not charging anyone, anyone can pick up a bingo, community bingo card. Are we promoting in a in a weird weird way? This might sound weird, but like, are we promoting gambling? Like, I know it's a weird thing to say, but I have to I have to throw it out there, right? Like, it's, I don't know. Or is this just a fun, family-friendly sort of?
I'm not sure that it's a gambling thing. I think it's a fun, family event.
Okay.
You know, I think whoever takes part in it, uh, I think they wanna give them a prize.
Got it.
So what was the amount being asked for? Three thousand or thirty thousand?
Three thousand.
Three.
Three thousand.
Three thousand? Oh, that's not much.
So they're not giving away. They're not giving away a bunch of iPads or something. It's gonna be smaller, smaller fun prizes appropriate for children?
Correct, yeah. I mean, they didn't list what they're going to be giving away, but, um, you know, three thousand doesn't go real far, but.
Well, it just strikes me odd. I mean, it sounded like local businesses supported the Child's Day, like, in July in the past. Are they saying that they don't wanna support, they wanna get back their business, or they want the taxpayers to fund this? Kind of lost as to. Why they're requesting this. If businesses have supported it in the past. Why do they don't support it again?
Yeah, it's an interesting take for sure. I mean, so are they not asking businesses for support and donations at all? Do you know?
I, from what how this reads, I do did not get that they were, um, asking businesses for support.
All right, from my understanding, how mayor, she, Sean is saying the businesses have given, you know, graciously throughout the years. And they wanna take a turn and give back to the businesses. It's a map, the tax.
So they're gonna pay that three thousand, they're gonna split it out over the businesses that supported over the years and.
So the taxpayers going back towards the businesses essentially is what it sounds like.
Basically, we're asking maybe promote a. Children's Day where, you know, families come bond, go out and he, you know, it's a bingo, so I'm assuming you gotta go to a spot and get a. A thing put on there and then move on to the next spot and stuff like that.
I think I think the bottom line is the children's festival, it's something for the kids and. To me, I'm not gonna ask too many questions about, you know, details. It's it's a, it's a, it's a good event. The kids. Lots of kids participate and, uh, you know, and and I think. I think however they. You know, work it out to to get kids attention, that's that's fine.
Is there any issues with the three thousand dollars, I think so? So go ahead.
No, I, one, I think it, I'm I'm a little sad to see, you know, the the Canada Day Children's Festival event canceled. This I don't have any problem with, but kind of wanna slide onto the table with it that maybe. Council can come together and ourselves, maybe with some staff support, pull the barbecue regardless. Because that's always a hit and draw.
It is, it's just food is difficult. It's still really difficult, I know.
Okay, or a bubble event or something where all of council can go and pitch in and try and draw people down Patterson Park like normal. And have an event for people that may wanna come down and. Make giant bubbles or.
Maybe a a separate thing from the grant.
Yeah, sorry, I'm I'm off.
That's okay. So does anybody have any issues with the three thousand dollars for this one? Too big breath there.
No. You know, for me, the thing that I do like about it is we are looking at a. A three thousand dollar investment, um, for for purchasing local prizes, which I do like that it's, you know, this is a way of supporting local business as well. You know, local businesses can say, you know what, you spend three hundred, we'll give you three hundred, you know. They they can support in their own ways when they go back to these businesses in our communities as well to contribute back to, uh, them. That's up to those private individuals or or, you know, um, those local businesses to decide what they would like to do to contribute to the the children's festival. But in the specific request from the town for three thousand dollars for purchasing local prizes, you know, for myself, this is. Part of the way that, you know, through a natural process of a community gap program that we can also contribute back to that local economy.
Yeah, okay. So I don't think we have any issues. The only one we need to circle back to is the Nap Tec Ramble, so can we pull?
Uh, if we're gonna go back to the full, full, full bit, yeah, okay, yeah, sorry, I'm just gonna go back to the fact.
Are you wanting to comment before or after?
I admire just, uh, just like conversation, I just want to. Just a quick thought, council, I've done this in the past and. Past councils have liked having a one or two minute presentation of the groups to come in and allow them to talk to them directly as well. I know it's been, I had just said, you know, you have something to consider for the future as this is an iterative process if we wanna make changes on that. That's a suggestion I made to mayor Callum this morning that maybe we'd have to send up here to do a presentation if there's any questions they can ask.
I think it's probably something we could add to our policy, right? Does anybody have? Does anybody agree that that's something that would be necessary in case we have questions? Because, I mean, I'm sure, like, Tony, those are pretty lengthy. Submissions, right?
Over the heart, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, yeah, so that's a good consideration, something to think about, that maybe we had. Okay, so the only one we need to circle back to is the Nap Tec Ramble, so I think what we kind of need to do is we need to go around the table and see what everyone is comfortable with. And then sort of then we can kind of come up to a consensus or consensus of where we sit with that funding or how we're going to fund. So I'm gonna start with Hugh.
I will start with this. It's not within the municipal of Larrange requesting forty one hundred dollars. And, uh, I, you know what, I I can't support that. I think it's a pretty initiative for a lot of the talent that we see within our communities. But, uh. I struggle with that large amount. Can we entertain the thought of bringing that down to a thousand bucks? And then on the in-kind bit, I mean, we we support them with traffic control and some of the cover up some of the dirt and whatnot with the rubber mats. It sounds so, uh. Yeah, that that's my take on it, keep it a lot lower than what the request is.
So you're looking at a thousand just as a as a cash donation and moving to. What, like a?
Yeah, see, they put a request into some rubber mats. I guess, yeah, that that's just to keep the dirt down. Is that, we've got a bunch of rubber mats? I don't want.
No, they they usually use that for covering their floors and stuff from the metro to the stage.
Oh, I see.
Like rig mats, is that, like rig mats that they don't?
I can bear that, but it's just, yeah, I would suspect. And staging, we don't have staging, do we?
Yes, we do.
No? Is it, it's probably not being utilized a whole big bunch with this COVID going on?
That's correct.
So, Tony, is the staging the same thing that we would use for like the, uh, CCHS grad in the management?
That's correct.
So the only thing that I have issue with that is that that's not really all terrain.
That's not really what, sorry.
It's not really an all-terrain stage, you know, it would be very cause if if I'm if I'm not mistaken, it's basically reinforced, what, eight foot by six foot planks?
Um no, it's actual staging um that comes folded like a table type thing.
Okay. Right.
Um very, it's very heavy. Um.
I think this could be utilized for an outdoor event. I don't know if you heard that, Tony. Could it be utilized for an outdoor event?
I'm sorry?
The staging, could it be utilized for an outdoor event?
It can be uh, it would be fairly um they if they have to reinforce it. Uh when we have it set up in the arena here, we have to clamp the bottoms together just to make sure that they don't um come hard. But we have all of that stuff to uh to work with that.
So on on the in-kind donation that I see there with the four hundred, is that staging including the town setting up, transporting it out there and getting it ready for them? Or is this basically this is what we would charge you to rent it? Your job is to pick it up, set it up and bring it back?
Um they would have to set it up and take it out there.
And bring it back?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, um Ryan, what's your thoughts on the cash and the kind?
The cash and the kind part, um I mean, I'm fine with the forty one hundred. Uh but the rest of it I struggle with. I I I figure with the forty one hundred that we give that they could afford to pick up some of the stuff that they need.
Okay, Joe?
Yeah, I'm kind of the same way. I'm okay with the with the grant portion. But it may be maybe staging where we don't do anything, but in terms of of putting our resources out there, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, uh Catherine?
So if we bring this down to four, um our portion would be three thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Considering if L'Orange were to um pitch in a portion, the band and the resort communities, municipality. So I would be comfortable contributing a quarter of the amount in cash for them to do whatever they need to do. Um if because it is an event that impacts, you know, the the resort communities, L'Orange, the band, um lands and us. So I would be comfortable with that. Now, if the event were to move into the boundary of the town of L'Orange, I would recommend a higher amount of support because then it would be a L'Orange event. Um I too am not very comfortable with getting the equipment out there. It is our municipality, municipal borders. Um it's it's a great event, um attracts a lot of tourism, et cetera, but it's it's not within our municipality. It's actually not even within the perimeter of our municipality. It's, you know what, it's still gonna be a ten, fifteen minute drive, so.
Okay, um Councilor Sharon?
Uh I I am a happy supporter of the NapTech Ramble because it's been built up from next to nothing and has evolved into an incredible, big, put us on the map event. And us, I mean the region. L'Orange is considered, you know, by people that aren't here, this is all L'Orange. Um there's definite spin-off benefits that we get from this um within the municipality. So I have no problem financially supporting the event, maybe even if it's uh if the materials can handle it, lending out or, you know, in-kind support of staging and rubber mats being borrowed, that's fine. I'm not a big fan of the machinery going out there and prepping the site because that's not our property. And, you know, putting thousands of dollars of leveling and grading and uh sandy gravel on the site benefits the private owner, not not us. So um if we wanted to spend some money as a town and prep our own site for a festival, great, I'm I'm down with that. But uh I'm happy to support the ramble, whatever they need. I don't know if it's appropriate to go back to them and say, hey, these are the things we're not comfortable with, but these are the things we are. What, you know, can you revise your request? But we are considering this tonight. I would be comfortable with giving more than the money requested. Um in addition to the staging and rubber mats uh with the way that Tony described it. Um but that's kind of where I stand. I don't have a definite number as to where I go with the cash.
Okay, and then Councilor Bill?
So I've kind of got a full idea of where we can go, not just on the NapTech Ramble, but on all the ones that have come forward here tonight. And I don't know when council would like to entertain that um or if you just want my reasonings for just this one. Um I I I guess I can leave it at that for right now. If if council's okay with me going forward, what I think is the best way forward here, I'd be willing to put the recommendation forward.
Go for it.
Okay. So uh as everyone recalls, we did the strategic plan with the town of L'Orange and it and it's uh everybody's disposal there on on your on your page. Uh I'll give a little bit of the reasons for why I have to come up with a recommendation of the approval of these and the denial of some of them as well. Uh for the L'Orange Arts Council for the uh downtown mural, I would put the recommendation and we willing to put forward the recommendation that we approve the full amount requested as that would fall under our downtown revitalization to develop the downtown master plan as well as yeah beautify our downtown core. We've seen that, you know, as we invest in our downtown core, so does the so does the community. We see a lot of community garbage pickup. We've had people like Becky McKenzie that's been going, you know, stop sign to stop sign all around lot, we're on job and you're cleaning up cigarette carts and you name it. And, you know, this is a good way to provide that same sort of investment in our downtown core as well. Uh secondly, to the um Wild Rice Writers Group, I also.
Can I just drop it for once? Cause we've already gone through all of them and there was no, there you had there.
There I thought it was just questions. I don't know if we've approved or denied. That was where I was.
Okay, sorry, continue then. No, go ahead, keep going.
Okay. So on the on the matter of the Wild Rice Writers Group, I also would recommend that uh we we approve the full amount as this ties into improving our community profile. We have a lot of people here that have amazing writing ability and artistic ability. And if we can do that and and improve our community profile by way of showcasing our talent, that is a a way that we can do that and the amount requested is not that extensive to do so. And it also ties into the next one as well as the uh ramble. For myself, I would say that we can donate a portion of the cash. I would recommend personally a two thousand dollar investment as this typically goes into supporting a lot of our local talent here as well. They had, we have a local night that people have had auditions. Um you know, the spin-off of that going into rental spaces in our community for auditions as well as um you know, preparing music lessons, all of those things that people will invest in our community. This will help support those those people uh in that as well. Um in the in-kind donation of the ramble, uh the mats and the staging, I'm torn on with the staging. I think if if we were to supply our staging to ensure that it isn't damaged, I'd like us to make sure that we're the ones that are building this. And if that's not part of the original request, then I would put it forward that we do not approve the staging and then we allow them to find that themselves. Unless they're willing to pay us to also have our crew out there and set it up for them. Um so that it's two thousand and fifty total dollars given to the ramble, two thousand in cash, fifty in kind plus the traffic services that they normally get through the fire services. And on the sled dog, uh I would say that we would look at the full amount um just as we have been able to, you know, see the economic spin-off of this almost exact dollar amount from the amount of veterinary services we have in our area. Some really good experience for people to come up and and see the dogs as well as the people that, you know, the matchers and everybody else, the economic turn into our restaurants and our hospitality in our area. This is a good way that we can see a good return on investment as well. On the matter of the Alex Robertson Public Library, um personally, I would say that since we already give a very hefty donation and and support to the Alex Robertson Public Library through normal quarterly funding, I would recommend that we do not approve this one. And we allow them to look for somebody in the private sector to step on so that as it has been passed. Um and the last one here, um the uh Children's Festival, I do uh recommend that we approve the full amount of that one as well. Um as when we look at introducing new community engagement processes focused on youth, this is one that I think is a quick win for us to be able to get families back out in outdoors and enjoying the area. And I'd put it forward that that's the recommendation that I would like to see approved at the um next council meeting.
Okay, awesome. So um and I I apologize since I thought as we were going through, there was there was any like people that were that were people did not wanna do it or so, but thank you for the clear uh take on it. Um so we'll quickly go down here, although it makes it a little difficult because I, there were no oppositions to any other funds on there. Um if anyone else has any other questions about or any that is not interested in that, then I'm gonna go back to the ramble.
If it's appropriate, if you have questions about the funding for the Children's Day Festival, I can answer.
I don't think it's quite appropriate.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
Um so
I don't vote.
So um unless there was any other oppositions for the library, is there any other oppositions to that, honey? No? Okay. So uh I think what they're what moving forward for uh for approval, this is everything will get approved except for the ramble um funding and what I sort of just with my quick math here um to try to average what everyone's uh wishes are. Um it works out to approximately a cash donation of two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars um and providing staging and the rubber mats plus the traffic that we have done in the past as well. Um my one question though before is if we provide staging and we do not set it up, what are are we, is there any insurance that might come back and buy this in the butt? You have something which to go wrong? Cause it's our equipment.
There is, yes. I would say that's a good possibility.
So something that I think we need to make sure that they have adequate insurance in case something goes.
Event insurance provided, probably, yeah, maybe.
We uh like you have a mayor, so we have to make sure there's insurance we need under that policy. Plus, as far as equipment, if we do give it out, they need to have some sort of a just like agreement to wear out liability event of.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and again, that's that's operational, so I I I'll I'll pull back from that, but just I wanna make sure that that's on the table. That did you think you have something?
I just wanna make sure there's insurance on the stage as well. Like I don't wanna see it come back broken. On this that that would be my hesitation at landing it down, right? Especially if you've got people setting it up that don't know what they're doing.
So does anybody have any questions, comments around that that dollar amount, the two two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars? It's an average of what everyone has sort of come across on the table.
For myself, I unless we're setting up a stage and they have specifically asked us to do that, I for for us to be able to replace the mouse at that stage, I I personally would say that we we don't look at uh at having a stage over there.
Okay, so I think that that's that's what we'll come forward for the next meeting will be the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and twenty. Oh, you have one more?
Um I'm I'm curious um with the ramble because it's such an opportunity for exposure. Was there any mention of, you know, sponsorship recognition or how that weighs into it or?
Is that in our policy?
That's in our policy. We're gonna get the towns recognized.
Get the towns recognized, okay.
Okay.
Um I personally wanna see more money going to the ramble, more financial support. I'd rather the direct financial support than um the like if if we're questioning staging, then I would like to see it just turned into cash instead um to support some event this year, you know, support their event this year, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think just based on what we ran around the table, like this this is the average and like, cause otherwise we're at our next meeting, we're just gonna sit there forever. We're just go back and forth and back and forth and forth and forth. Yeah, two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and then plus staging plus rubber matting um contingent on insurance and liability. Okay, anything further to add to that conversation? Otherwise, everything else will be approved as requested. Okay.
Enjoy all this, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the L'Orange Avenue shoreline um lease report. Um Steve, did you wanna talk?
I just uh follow up from last week to the request for the map of the shoreline.
Does anybody have any questions about what's been presented?
Um I swear to goodness, there is a paper map somewhere that I've created that has literally all of our public reserve colored in green. I don't know if uh Councilor McPhail or Watt remember that map cause I'm pretty sure it was put in front of me at some point.
I do actually remember and I'm just gonna comment too, this red line, it's it's red, broken, red, broken. It's like it's it's not very clear.
It that's the the boundary of the town.
So I was wondering what's private and what's not?
Um any property labeled with an R, like an MR or an R, uh along the shoreline would be reserved property. Um for example, if you look down uh at the police point, um the police point page.
That's very personal, yeah.
Parcel C C and parcel C are private. However, um adjacent to block twenty-two at the end of Third Street and where it says the big twenty-two, that is municipal reserve.
That far is?
Yeah. Are we able to project these up on the screen somewhere?
Uh not without risking the zoom.
Okay, no worries. Um is there basically anywhere that there is a small strip in front of normal looking lots? That's gonna be municipal reserve?
Nope, not through. Uh lot eleven, ten, um parcel twenty-two.
Oh, no, no, those are uh lot nine. Do you guys know how to read lot lot numbers on a map like this? Cause everybody, is everybody comfortable doing that? Okay, I just sometimes it can be a little tricky. Ten and eleven go straight to the water. Uh nine does not, eight does not, seven does not. So seven, eight, nine are um ordered by municipal reserve.
So L'Orange Avenue, block forty-one. Um.
Sorry, say it again?
L'Orange Avenue, it's page four or six, I'm on record.
Four or six, okay.
There's a little strip that go all the way down around. That's gonna is for reserve?
Yes, so it comes straight from L'Orange Avenue. Um that is the access. That is your access to that tiny strip along the shoreline, but functionally, it means nothing. It's not, it's it's environmental in purpose. Um and the way that they have to subdivide that out uh in protecting that bit of shoreline. So that is going to be.
So on the second last page where it says, cause now I I wanna look at some of our more issues that we're dealing with personally, um the R two and the R three.
Mm-hmm.
And I appreciate that you're giving, you're doing the the presentation on this. Um what what are those? What are?
Okay, so R two and R three are municipal reserve lots. They're original public reserve.
Uh-huh.
Um you can see in there kind of penciled in is one hundred and twelve feet, number fourteen. And you see fifty feet, number eleven, V Studer and K Spooner. And then to the left of that, you see L Haglen. So those are the leases
Right, I understand that. But what is the R two and R three? Is that?
That is public reserve lot two and public reserve lot three. So that is municipal land that is dedicated. So under it's under the dedicated lands regulations and subject to.
Cause not everything could be labeled with an R. Cause each one has its own municipal reserve number.
Well, it's historic, so R means reserve.
Yeah.
And historically, it was called public reserve. Now there's different classes. So there's municipal reserve, uh environmental reserve, by the strips.
So for example, the second last page, again, between KTF Properties and L Haglen, that little chunk of that parcel there, what is that?
That is just public.
Reserve.
Yeah. Those lines drawn in that the leases are lease names are coming off of, those are drawn in. R one goes all the way from Tromblay Street, which is beside block nine, lot ten on the left side of that, all the way to Finlayson.
Yeah.
That is one pr- one parcel, the whole way across.
Okay. And the property that's to the right of Kate Spooner?
Is the Anglican Church.
Right, I understand that. But where is the where is the continuation from this map? And I find this really hard to consumption. And I find this really hard to consummize.
It wouldn't, because it would just continue into Patterson Park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I see. So it's literally just that, and that's it?
Mm-hmm.
So right next to lot ten there, just to the left of the condo, isn't that supposed to be Tromblay Street?
That is, yeah.
It was, it was legally closed.
It's not leased on there, that's obvious.
It was legally closed, so it's no longer Tromblay Street.
What do you mean?
It was legally closed, and therefore it's no longer Tromblay Street.
It's legally sold.
Old, closed, closed.
Sold.
It's no longer a road, it's now a surface parcel.
Is that what would have been known as Carlson Dock, or no? Is that right there?
Kind of ways.
Carlson Dock, yeah. Down there, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
A portion of that, I believe, is leased to.
That's part of, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this?
So add the red line is municipal boundary and the breaks are what again, sorry?
Just the boundary line.
Just the boundary line, that, that is red and black?
Uh, it just me, it's delineating the town from the lake.
Okay.
Yeah. But in practice, that line is some, mostly in the water. A lot of the parcels do not actually extend that far, and then there's other parcels such as, you see number ten, three hundred and twenty-nine feet.
Okay, stop.
Okay, yeah, right here.
It's the, it's the transwest water race.
Eight five.
Um, so the portion from, um, the L Haglen lease to Finlayson Street, that is the water race lease. But that extends into the water even more. There's additional, uh, fill and dock, I think it's a concrete dock, I don't know, I don't know exactly what. But if you look on, um, an aerial map with an overlay of the lots, you'll see that there's a bit of a different.
So then this right here is lot three, is owned by the resident?
Yes.
And then this one, twelve, fourteen is what?
The, the portion that's leased.
Okay.
So that's the, under the new way that it's leased, that's how it's leased, is it's that whole portion is calculated for the square footage and the lease fee that they pay.
And it's leased to this person, yes, that's the, to the water line?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Essentially water line.
They, they now pay the square footage, the width of their lot to the water line, instead of before, it was, I think.
Three feet of shoreline or something.
It was like a linear footage fee, um, which essentially was just where their dock attaches to the land. But based on the usage of the lots, I think the policy was developed to make it a little more fair, um, in, in the, the revenue generation and the usage.
They would get, you have a small house that wanted a single dock where you had the commercial industry running a shoreline lease, that it was reflective of what they had.
So this is what they're trying to buy, this section right here, or is it this section?
Yeah, no.
So that one, what they're already leasing.
Yes.
And when, when does the lease expire?
It's annual, I think. Um, this also does not show Bird Point, um, Bird's Point has, um, environmental reserve in front of it. And based on our policy, all of those residents are permitted to have a dock, I believe. Um, but they don't pay a lease fee.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or conversations around this? Okay, so this will be received and filed, uh, as per, okay, we move on to three point one, two point four, which is the twenty twenty-one corporate work plan, uh, Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I just, I want to belabor the point for today, just wanted to begin from a council, a little discussion about the plans for twenty twenty-one. We're starting to move from taking the street duty plan, start to operationalize a little bit in terms of assigning where things need to go. And some of the stuff that is currently, um, in the queue, I mean, um, again, this is just not for twenty twenty-one, this is all the way up to twenty twenty-five. Um, but we're just about to release the economic development tourism, our P the masterclass that I have at school, it's done. It should be going out this week, I'm just tuning up. So it's the biggest thing as we're going through this, just to start thinking about measurable, and not, okay, the person that kind of talked about what we did is actually demonstrating some of the results. So, new website, um, actually have interesting news there, um, Brianna was actually, uh, looks like she's gonna be successful in getting a grant for the new website, so looking at that. So, um, I won't go through the report, everybody's had a chance to read it. Let's see, this is gonna be, he said, the last thing we're gonna work on, um, is just evolutionary, we're just now getting into our work plans for staff, start building account and kind of responsibility. What we're gonna start working on this year and going into next year, and more importantly, measurable. Maybe one final comment I can, the one of the big pieces I've taken away from only talking to council people at communities, working on a community leasing strategy. Um, and if we had a good discussion with the N C P at the date, uh, can make together a bit of a strategy, different facets, not just relying on one area, but just, you know, different areas, different ways, one of which is by law, just start, just putting a lot of pressure on some of these properties, they're causing maybe some issues, a little more self policing on some of these properties. So, um, I do have some irons in fire there to start improving that, but that's kind of the big takeaway for me right now is that community leasing strategy that was in the scrapmaster, dive into that and getting some things lined up, so happy to take any questions.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mary, any for just, uh, a little re-just?
Yeah, can we do one more then? Let's do one more, and then, yeah, cause now I'm by here, yeah. Uh, let's move to staff succession and continuity planning.
Um, yeah, so again, I'm trying to keep it short, don't get in between, uh, Councilor Sherrin and the break.
Very well.
I just an observation since I'm in here, we've heard a couple of close calls around operational items, um, specifically public works in the airport where managers have gone down. Uh, our airport manager was sick actually for over two weeks, and he was actually kind of pretty close, just due to illness, wasn't related to COVID, but, uh, um, anyways, one of the things I'd like to suggest to council, if you bring back the two lead operators positions, not new people, just reinstate them and have more cross training done to make sure people can float, and I've already talked to the new staff, and they're willing to actually move back and forth. So again, removing some of the silos, so you can move people back and forth, so if something happened in the airport, I can pull somebody from over, off the street, go over there for half a day or whatever, trying to, just more flexibility. We were really close since I've been here, once they even considered calling in the company that provides temporary infrastructure services. And just for example, one of the previous municipalities I worked at, they, mm, they worked taken ahead and it cost thirty thousand dollars a month to bring in an outside training person to operate critical infrastructure. So this intent here is to get ahead of it, start to work on cross training, planning the whole nine yards, and get more redundancy. One of the other issues we had recently, we came close to our operators as well, and just again, focusing on getting more of those utility operators, you know, getting better, better redundancy built into the system, so then if things start falling apart, just have more flexibility.
I was just wondering how long it would take us to get back to that, because it's, it's worked over the years, and, uh, I think the office administration kind of, kind of recommends that we get away from it. But I've always been a believer that if you have something that's a lead, if you're for, you know, the department that's going down, they can step into it because they, you know, they've been given a little bit of mentoring along the way and, and taking responsibility and, and, no, I think it's a good, I support that.
Yeah, just if I can, we are, it's one other point, if there's an individual that expresses desires to take over management that works in the town, this would be starting to train that person up for eventual transition and to take over, and here for one of the areas.
Uh, so the only issue I have with that is that we are, we are paying for a risk and reestablishing something that we've got away with, because we were trying to train all people to be able to do some level of cross call. Um, I know in, in some organizations that I've been with, um, what has typically happened is the person that is the most competent below uh, the management level would be given an in charge stipend, because they are the most trained person at that time, and the most competent to handle that role, and would be given an hourly increase while the manager would be in, in a situation like that. Um, and, and for me, rather than creating another level of, you know, manager supervisor, uh, like a out of scope manager plus an in scope supervisor managing two to three people, I would find it more appropriate for the size and scale of organization for the time being, in my personal opinion, to go to a prime, if you will, or a lead, um, but it, it not be a salary grid adjustment where you are consistently getting paid a higher amount because you are that person. But that you, we, we, as a matter of practice, train our staff that they can take over in that, uh, in that time, and when named in charge when a manager's away, they're given that hourly stipend, um, in recognition of the additional training and, and the additional responsibilities that we take in there.
Right, I, I would agree with that, I was, my comment was that, uh, our staff are going to get the flash um, from the back and forth ping pong decisions that have been made, and I think allowing staff to have some calm time to, 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 to work within the system that is in place. But hundred percent agree with having our staff build in the redundancies, but I think just give staff opportunities to take training, to become redundant, uh, um, players in, in our system, and that it's very much like the provincial government in that where sometimes the executive director gets, you know, is off for a while, and a director gets bumped up and just gets the
Stipend.
Stipend, yeah, so I, I actually would hundred percent support, I think, that where it's not necessarily creating a new position, um, and another layer of super management.
Right, yeah, Mr. Mary, on day one, uh, ninety-eight percent of the staff here highlighted this, this is the one, he actually used to keep the camera running. So this is not my recommendations, it's actually coming from right from management all the way down to the front line staff. This is the number one observation, and it's been consistent for the last four months I've been here, and I have brought it forward because I wanted to get my ducks in a row in terms of seeing the need. Um, so this is actually coming from all the way from my staff all the way to the council management. And, and what's, sorry.
I think in terms of, you know, structure, I think you, when I have somebody that, that manager's away, is this person gonna take the same charge as the manager's taking? He's, he's up to date on whatever has to happen. On the business, I know a lot of works, I've got people that are, are good workers, and I've got people that can actually take that information that I give and, and maintain that same level of function. And so I think it's important to have somewhat structured approach to this thing. You know, it's worked in the past, uh, for years, uh, and, and I don't see any conservative negatives.
I, I would be in favor of the administrative recommendation, um, unless we look at having, um, Sagar step into those roles during the manager role. I don't know what the actual reality of that could be, that would be the only other alternative I would see. If the manager's away for a long, extended period of time, Sagar would pick up those two between, is that doable? How would we not?
Okay, Mr. Mary, another comment I have, and I've already brought in a cigar to start training up on this, it's just creating redundancy. We've turned over, over three or four staff since I've been here. The more riders we have, the better. The challenge here is that we're looking over the next four years, we have people that need to start working on long-term planning and ground infrastructure, getting things going, and you can't do that if you actually do a day-to-day task, going out there and heading along and doing stuff. I mean, it takes time sitting down, planning it out, and it doesn't happen overnight, so that's, that's a balancing act, getting a cigar pulled in, and it will happen, because again, I'm gonna view more redundancy I built into the system, the better, it is just, it's a fine line between getting too operational and actually start looking out and planning the infrastructure.
So I guess from an operations standpoint, can you tell me the, the negative effect of going to the stipend versus the core lead salary position?
The only comment I can see, Councilor, is, uh, just again, taking over when they're not there, um, what's it ever them to be completely engaged, right, full-time?
So, if I'm catching what you're saying, is that if they are consistently paid a point where they are basically the next incoming commander, succession planning, if you will, that the, in, in your experience, the staff will engage more in the training opportunities and whatnot to be that and, and maintain that position, or?
I think it's a, particularly the point you made in observation, it's, um, it's kind of like engaging them more, putting more value on their abilities to pick up, and just challenging them, right? I mean, right now, to be personally in this council, in the policy right now, we can't give a overage right now of eight percent for people picking up higher degrees, I believe it's in the policy right now.
To do what?
To do overage, if, if, uh, Pat takes over the CEOs, you get the eight percent overage rate.
Right.
So I believe it's already in policy in this council right now.
So then if, and I believe that's why we've gotten rid of, uh, Councilor Watt, you were there when we did the personnel policy wrapping and, and reorganizing with, with our previous administration, I believe that was the intention of putting in that eight percent for additional, reducing the matter of when somebody's away, the next qualified person would get that stipend and, and the increased duty pay.
Um, I, I understand the deal on a longer term basis, but I think where Steve's going is, we're talking two weeks. What I, what I do believe, uh, listening to this for the last half hour, uh, is in regards to, when, when an employee goes down, as in our airport manager, somebody has got to be able to cross train, step into that position. It's not always money related, it's, it's, it's that training aspect, that they can step into that with ease. Am I correct in that, Steve?
Yeah.
I, I can see where everybody's coming from, and, and on one side, it's just the person with seniority and, um, who has earned to the top of their grid, they're kind of the, uh, lead anyway, they just don't have the title and the specified salary grid. The other hand, I'm just gonna go with the recommendation that we should see what your proposal is, um, bring it to council, and, uh, we can, I think, maybe further debate when we actually have the information in front of us.
Is that, is that the support and will of council at this point, or is, you know, do a quick straw over here and whether we're going with it or not? Um, so, what, are you in support of what's here, Hugh? Councilor Watt, you are? Councilor Mary?
Of what I've just said, to come back with the plan.
Okay. Councilor, um, Kudorski, what are you in support of?
I'm in favor of re-putting instituting the lead operator position as, as the recommendation here.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Sherrin, I know where you can find it.
I, I would all, I would like to see, you know, the, the proposal for the lead operator, uh, positions, as well as maybe highlighting the specific parts of the, uh, personnel policy that it may affect, um, or, you know, where it, where it intersects with, um, some of those policies in the personnel policy.
Okay.
Just to get a bit of a, an overview as to how it all works together.
Okay. And Councilor Reese, come on in.
I would go with the administrative recommendation around this.
Okay. And Councilor McPhail?
Um. I mean, I have no problem with Steve's plan, I, I, I doubt that it's gonna change where I personally am sitting, but yeah, we can go over the same plan as, as there. I'll, uh, reserve my comments for, left me.
Okay. So I think, um, the request to administration is to come back to that plan, um, and then we can further debate and see where we go with that, because we're right down the middle of that. Okay, sorry, I apologize, I should, we should recess one recess, I, as soon as we went into, I was like, oh no, oh no. So let's recess and back to order down there. Okay, I'll call up the meeting back to order, I'm moving on to, uh, number three point one, point six, uh, which is the supplier outstanding taxes and utility bills. Does Pat can speak on this, or are you gonna speak on it?
I speak too.
Okay.
Uh, this is just a tool I'm using to these municipalities to encourage payment. I mean, every community I've worked in, this is non-unique to Laurentia, it's just some suppliers and some people have outstanding property taxes, it's mainly property taxes, and they want to still do business with the town, and previous councils I've worked with, as many owners who want to do business with the town, pay our bills and keep it current, bottom line, and you'd be amazed that when you implement that policy, how quickly you get their attention, because you can't really sit there and, but you did. You'd be amazed that when you implement that policy, how quickly you get their attention because you can't really sit there and but you did Prince Albert. Within the week, the balances are repeated. As soon as we say okay, people will not be hiring your trucks to from the local company.
Recording in progress.
It was that week, the owner came in, spread the tax bill, and they were back on the list to generate business from the city. So.
I yeah, policy. Um so is there, obviously, the the legislative requirements on this? Is that something that would also be outlined that would allow this to be something under the NMAIC city here, so I'm guessing it's a cities act? Um guideline? I know for the most part, it's very copy and pasty. But um do you do you know if there's something that is clearly outlined in cities compared to towns like?
This uh, counselor, this is, there's no there's no legislation at all or any three D apps that would prohibit us from doing this. This is just business practice one-on-one.
Okay.
Um there's nothing specific to say. This act, this is just a will of council, a municipality that you want to do business with us. Make sure your bills are paid.
Okay. Any other questions around that or you guys could have a recommendation going forward with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I understand.
Can we put a limit on that? Like, I would hate to see somebody have five dollars going from last year and then give refuse because of the policy.
Yeah, I mean, if I can, counselor, just common sense.
Yeah.
Right. The ones where I look here, I know that I'm aware of, the community reports at fourteen to twenty-five thousand dollars.
And and that's fine. That's fine. Like, not to have the taxes up to that amount, but I'm saying it's fine to, I I just feel like I said, if it's like a a five hundred or a thousand dollar limit, uh if somebody's behind, they're not going to be denied right away.
No, no, guys, I mean, beyond this, counselor, I've done this now probably twenty times in my career. You usually give fair notice, you look at, you know what, policy council now has been, you guys screw up. I mean, you've got thirty days permits for your bills. It's not like it's immediate, you're going to cut them off just to be follow the process. I always recommend giving them proper times for everything.
So with a matter from a matter of procedure on this, then if council approves this, um then you would send others, people that do have supplier relationships with the town, let them know that in future that they would have to mention.
Yes, I mean, anything to do with a good fair process, fair notice, it's not twenty-four hours or cut off because that's not fair.
Right.
Right, so you just basically give the political will and it sounds like you're willing to agree with that. Um that this is fair business practice.
Okay, good. All right, moving on to three point two point one. Um and so Dean, sorry, um that we will change this so that we we don't have people waiting um in future. So apologies for that. Um so this, as I as I understand it, and Dean, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So my call, our
Can you hear me?
Yep, uh our apologies. Um we'll we'll try to fix that for next time. Um so this this report coming to us was before we had our conversations, I understand it. Um and I'll I'll sort of leave you to add anything else that that you can or or want to to the report.
Sure. So basically, I can just give you a quick update with respect to resources, where we're at right now. And uh we do have one of our supervisors leaving. He's got like three shifts left and then he's going to be gone, going up to Fond du Lac. But uh I said that we did get a new corporal just started a couple shifts ago named Shane Marion, just purchased the house here in Laurent. So good to have him on board. He'll be uh taking over A watch for rep that's leading. So that's great to see. We still have uh two other corporals in place here as well. Um I know I've expressed an interest in moving towards a twenty-four-hour uh shift. And that's still a desire and we're still trying to work towards that. We're just not quite there with respect to those bodies. So I know that we when we had our strategic planning session there, we kind of talked about the the ten additional members that we're still waiting on. And and I'm anxiously hoping that those positions aren't going to be, you know, come to a realization down the road here. And that will help us uh achieve that twenty-four-hour coverage, which would mean a lot quicker response time for the early, early shift in the morning when after five AM. So rather than having to get a member up out of bed and stuff like that. So that's kind of that. Otherwise, we have one corporal, our one constable vacancy. And uh I was told earlier this week by staffing that they're trying to find a cadet for us. So and if we can get a cadet like the last few that we've had, it will be in good hands if we can fill out that last constable spot. Um so yeah, with respect to our GIS unit there, as you guys are aware, they've been doing some tremendous work with our sort of project work targeted enforcement. Uh they do have a couple of other projects under me right now. And uh as you've probably seen in some of the media releases, they've executed a few more search warrants in the past a little bit here. And helping with our one of our strategic priorities of community safety and stuff like that. So so that was good. Um I had mentioned to Steve there earlier in the week that we had a prolific offender kind of walk away. He's known to do a lot of break-ins to residences. He did walk away from an open custody facility in the province. And lo and behold, he did end up back in the community here. So we uh did start to see some break-in enters again. And uh so we were able to get him back in custody in very short order after he showed up here. So that was really great to see. A good joint effort by the one watch and and got him back in custody. So that makes me sleep better at night, that's for sure. And uh yeah, we've been getting up more in the community uh over this last uh few weeks. More uh public events and lots of patrols throughout the Laurent jury and Patterson Park. And we're fortunate enough to be able to participate in a couple of the different community events with uh unfortunate uh residential school finding there and some of the events that brought about by that. So I was really honored to be able to participate that in those events with the members. And uh right now with summer months, it seems like they're upon us now. We've been kind of averaging about forty to fifty calls a day. And uh so it's it's picking up again. Um one of the things that we've been partnering with Ryan's group there with the domestic violence court is uh we're being able to make hub referrals now and utilizing our our three useful members that sit on the hub. So what we can do by that is just sort of uh before somebody goes down that road and ends up before the courts, we can sort of intervene and and steer them in a different direction and get them involved with Ryan's group there. And uh it's just sort of, I guess, more of a holistic sort of approach to getting people the help that they need before getting involved into court. So that's one thing that's good to see. Um we're really happy to participate in that strategic planning session there a few weeks ago. And uh I know one of the things that we heard was uh more patrols downtown and stuff like that. So and we talked about mobile patrols in the winter and some bike patrol. So I think one idea that I kind of have here is, and it what prompted it was seeing the beach volleyball going on last weekend and that sort of activity down around Patterson Park and that was really great to see. So uh I have a couple of quads coming and I recently got a bunch of members all trained in operating the quads. So I'd like to be able to just kind of go and do a slow patrol down throughout the park, interact with people, not necessarily taking an enforcement approach, just an interaction approach and saying, hey, how's it going? Great to sit and watch some volleyball or or whatever. And just get out there and be more visible, I guess. So I hope that you guys are okay with quads driving through the park. It's not like they're going to be ripping around. They'll just be, you know, slowly patrolling and saying hi and interacting with the people. So so that would be kind of a a plus, I think, to sort of meet that visibility aspect. So um I can talk about some of the numbers. There's been some decreases, uh good decreases, I suppose, like with respect to a person's crime, a property crime. Uh assaults and stuff like that are actually down. And then uh breaking in to businesses and residences have been down. So that's really great to see. Um and again, I attribute that to our prolific offender program where we're out and we're holding people accountable. And um I know Jordan had raised a concern before about just going out and breaching everybody. We're certainly not doing that and we're just trying to hold people to account so that we don't have to worry about people getting their houses broken into and and stuff like that. Or maybe somebody getting uh maybe assaulted or beaten up and stuff like that. So I know we had a bit of an incident there at the office there yesterday. I'm glad to see that nobody was seriously injured there. So um but yeah, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me. I'd be happy to answer.
I really have to say I appreciate the report.
Um I I just want to say I was really happy to see that you had um a couple officers at the pre-cam, I think that was, was that today or yesterday? Um engaging with the youth.
Yes.
It was it was just, it would have smiled on my face to really see that um interaction with the youth. So I don't know what would that look like.
Yeah, there's there's been actually quite a lot of uh school visitations lately. So it's great to see that they're getting back out there.
Yeah.
Just in time for summer days, but.
Yeah, but just another great visibility thing, right? Um so
Absolutely.
thank you for that.
Not to put a mega spin on things uh, but in regards to the rule nine-one-one, is it quicker to phone four-two-five-six-seven-three-zero versus a two-minute beam on hold?
During during the daytime, I would say yes. I know it's a harder number to remember, so I don't know if you have like an automatic dial that you could use. But yeah, and I know Steve and I talked about that yesterday. And unfortunately, we don't really have any involvement with nine-one-one, that service. That's a a whole different beast. There's the service that provides a service to the police services throughout the province. But, you know, during the daytime, we always have generally at least three support staff on. And uh they're quick to answer the phone and they, if there's an emergent situation like happened yesterday, they could get the members rolling quicker than nine-one-one.
And that
Because nine-one-one, they'll answer the phone, they'll ask, well, what's your emergency? And they still have to dispatch it. But in yesterday's situation, for whatever reason, they had to put you on hold for like, I guess, two minutes, which seems very unreasonable.
And and I'll just extend that comment in regards to your staff downtown during the day. They're very accommodating. They're very quick on the draw as far as getting personnel out there. So I uh I just want to commend you for that. Appreciate that.
So if there is anyone listening in there, Dean, what hours does the local dispatch run and answer four-two-five-six-seven-three?
So they would be from seven until four? Well, actually, four-thirty, seven until four-thirty, there's always a DSA in the office. And then after hours, if you called the office, it would be rerouted to Regina, which still might some, it shouldn't be quicker than nine-one-one, I don't know. But it might have been just an anomaly, that particular instance.
Okay.
But like I had mentioned to Steve, I'll, you know, I'll push it up the chain and just ask and I think that if we say like, was there something that happened that? Because that's certainly a long time. You know, two minutes doesn't seem like a long time, but when you're on the receiving end of somebody trying to cause you harm, that's a policy long term.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Redd?
Okay, I'm sure. So Dean, just to confirm, the next pass we're going to have of this kind of reporting, you you guys are going to shoot for the blended model?
S- sorry, I didn't quite hear that, Steve.
Sorry to go. So Dean, so the next pass on the reporting for council, you guys are going to try and take a pass at the blended model that we talked about between those two communities?
Yes, absolutely. I have that started and I've been working with Northfellow, but they're designing a template from them actually. And so thank you very much for helping me get that off the ground. It's going to look like a a lot better product, that's for sure. And we'll probably provide a lot more information as well.
Excellent. Cool. Okay. Thank you, Dean, and sorry again, apologies for the lateness of that.
No, no worries at all. Right, have a great day.
Have a great day. Um so the addition to the agenda really quick here is uh basically the facilitator position that was hired for the three communities to start conversations about um more about community safety. Um their mediator has been hired and the next step now is to meet individually with the with uh each town, municipality in the van. And then eventually what's going to happen is then those will then get facilitated into larger conversations where everything, they're hoping to do it in person so that we can have those open conversations with the mediator. Um the only question and why I brought it to the table today is because um they are, I guess, a little council wanting to know uh who we want to be sitting at those initial conversations and what we want to compile as far as um the conversations that we're going to have. They're going to have with us one-on-one. So they're going to meet with each each community separately first to understand what conversations need to be had or what sort of healings or or certain things need to happen before they bring us all together. So um I mean, I will be there um as a primary anyways. But then I guess just for the will of council, if we feel uh that we need, we we should have probably at least one more person there. Um having everybody at the con at the table, I don't know, is in my personal opinion, necessary because then it could get very, very
Long.
long. Um but that's also the will of council, whatever you guys choose, so.
So this is the one that it was a facilitator, not a mediator, right?
Well, it eventually, it it, yeah, it goes into having a facilitator, but it starts with the mediator for to um help the conversations happen first. And then the facilitator comes on board after that. Yeah.
And this is this is the one that was put on from Justice to work on community wellness, as you guys.
So what is the timeframe? Like, is it like that? Are they going to be gay days, evening days, weekend days?
So right now
When to when?
Right now, it's the they've come to us with the 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 dual thing. So they're putting a bunch of dates out there. Um and I just wanted to bring it to your attention um before I even began to start any of those.
I I'm interested, but I'm not available like eight, three, five, um most of the days except for summer months.
Okay.
Seeing as this is community wellness, is it, would it be inappropriate from an administrative standpoint to have one a lack of official and one person that actually does her recreation and and whatnot to be able to involve in that process? Or is this specifically a lack of official conversations at this point?
It's, I think it's kind of weird a lot.
I think it's kind of the driving bus right now though, Mayor. I mean, even more, mostly this more of reconciliation right now, getting people to the table, I don't think. It'd be a great time to engage any recreation staff, just just where it's at at this point.
Yeah, no, this this isn't um a a larger scale uh sort of community partnership, regional partnership sort of talk at this time anyways. Because especially because it's coming from Justice. And that's where that money's been here worked. Does anybody else have any feelings on it? Any takes on that? Who else?
I I can talk to my executive director. Now, I think you kind of fall into what I do. Um so I'll have to talk and see if I can get approval for that. I'll have to bring it to the board and see if they let me venture on something like that.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because I mean, I'm I'm open to everyone being at that table if they want to be. Um because I don't want to.
I think it's hard to get everybody to work and not be a that private.
Yeah, and and what happens is that it just lags on the process of what we're trying to achieve, I think, too.
So I think it actually falls in the scope of work I do. That's why I'm saying that it might be quite possible for me to sit on that.
Okay. And Vivian Hall, is there anybody else? Is that, and we'll see if it were like if it were to schedule.
Yeah, yeah, like if it does, yeah. And I think because I'm on the hub, like it sort of fits into my role, but I
You were both on the hub, yeah. Yeah.
I have to check too, right? Like, that's why I'd say, yeah, for sure, evenings, weekends, summer months, for sure.
Okay.
But during the day, I I really have to, like, I guess it's going to kind of what's the time to make.
Yeah, for sure.
I I would say that we could put our recommendation forward, every group of three people to be involved in discussions. And as we see that hold out, I mean, I'm willing to sit there. I'm sure everyone at this table is willing to present time for that as well. Uh if we can just keep it working, I think a group of three people is will have a very good snapshot of what can council can bring on.
Yeah, or even like, do I offer some available all day, every day?
I think they're trying to get it going here in like the next three weeks, like in June, so.
So, yeah.
So uh I know that there was there, they sort of disregarded any evening weekends, but there was a request specifically from the village asking for evening weekends to be added to that.
Oh, okay.
So um but again, these are
I think that also, yeah.
like these are separate um conversations that are happening with each community. So that's something that I can ask for too.
Mayor, you can send me some information. I know that I can share with mine.
Yep.
Your executive director and the and the board, that would be appreciated.
For sure. Will do. Okay, that's everything for the agenda before we move to, is there around tables? Anybody have anything else that they want to bring to the table this time?
Roundtable?
Roundtable, yeah.
I do.
Go ahead.
Um flags. Uh so I was hearing through the community about um questioning why we don't have either a reconciliation or a treaty flag uh flying here. Um I had a quick conversation with another counselor in administration about that. Um there's nothing in our policy that prohibits us from flying a flag where our town flag is currently flying. Um for our choice, if we if we so decide. Um I don't see anything in our policy that's, but that's, it's just something I want to bring up with everybody. I believe that there is uh an item on our next agenda or our next council meeting um in regards to this. Uh but I did want to kind of bring it up with council at this point to um gauge feelings of how everyone, you know, if if everybody is supportive of uh flying either the treaty flag or the reconciliation flag uh instead of the municipal flag.
I would be in favor of flying the treaty six flag next to the town garage flag and add that to a cycle to the front office. Because uh I think that would be more meaningful, like with this, not so big explanation, because not many people go to Laurent.
I am for that, I have brought that forward. But I think it would be appropriate to fly the treaty six flag.
I was just gonna say, I've heard the same thing throughout the community in talks and that. So I think it's important, I think that we have to address. Maybe like having an extra flag pole maybe out of it is, is possible.
So the flag costs a hundred twenty-two dollars and nine cents from flagmark Canada.
My personal take on that is we, I would be in support of adding at the, the flag pole. And I would like to add that to our, you know, budget area if we can find that within the budget to do that this year. If not, I think we should definitely have that conversation to include that in a go-forward basis. That is very part of the identity of the town of LaRonde as well. But I would, I would state that as of right now, the identity for sure that, you know, we have to have here is, you know, the Canadian provincial and municipal flags will remain. So I would like to see that the treaty six flag also fly. And, you know, in the, in the user group of our community flag pole, there's also been discussions of overlap. And I do know that in places like the city of Prince Albert, there is a single, maybe, is it a single flag pole that they have that can be, can be used by community user groups? And for myself, you know, when we look at every month, we have, you know, National Indigenous Peoples' Day coming up here in the month of June, and as we have a single flag pole, we also recognize the prime month here in, in the town. And to be able to facilitate a group of individuals that might want to be able to utilize that same space, I think by creating more space for that would be something that we can also have discussions of. But I don't think that that needs to be necessarily this year. I think as we discussed about, you know, around the community wellness, downtown revitalization and building a community profile, that's something that we would have discussions on, on actualizing in future budgetary discussions to make sure we have those spaces available. So I appreciate you bringing that up and I do think it is an amazing initiative that we can do here. And I think we can go further and even create more spaces for people to use as well. But I just don't think that this year, in our current situation right now, unless administration can find a budget to install another flag pole, I would say that would be more appropriate for our next year's budget.
Okay, anywhere, comments, questions?
I guess it would be unfortunate, what is the cost of a flag pole to do?
I mean, I've put a few flag poles in the past in, far more fancier than a front here and you're probably, as a quick guess, you're probably looking at about ten thousand dollars.
Wow, for a flag pole?
Yes, you have to do it properly and engineer it. The ones I put in the past were a little more fancier, about forty-five to fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
So I mean, I wouldn't get eyeshot, I don't want to convince anyone to talk to you there, right? So we're talking about engineered flag pole, right, so.
I completely respect the budgetary considerations that the mayor and Phil has and agree with them. I'm wondering, is there an appropriate way to display the treaty flag prior to having the budget in place for a appropriate flag pole out front here?
If I could make a suggestion, just for safety time, I mean, we're gonna have to correspond on our next council meeting. Let me have some options ready for council to start discussing it, because, yeah, I mean, I could look into a flag pole class and if it'd be only two thousand bucks, if we can find two thousand bucks like that, right? It's gonna be ten thousand dollars, a little different. So if I can just suggest to council, is the will, if we will come back with a little more information, that other item will be in the agenda here for the next council meeting for correspondence.
Okay. And then the other important part is that acknowledgement that we should have at the meeting number.
The Latin proportions?
The Latin proportions.
Yep. Yeah, and I just, I wanted you to bring that forward, so I think that that's, that that's very important too. I don't know, I mean, we don't, I don't think we have to even discuss it or debate it, I think I can just do it anyways, right? So, but thank you for bringing that forward because that is something that has been missed since I began and that's a huge oversight from my part too. So that, I think that will happen as well. Okay, any other roundtable discussions?
All I know is August is a foolish month and as long as we can get that pulled here by August, good.
Well, no, you can repress it, I haven't had this special interest if you want. Or it's not called special interest, what is it called?
It's user group.
User group, yeah.
It's for our policies and stuff.
Okay. Yeah, as long as it doesn't, doesn't spread hatred and all that, all that is shot.
So we're going to discuss tomorrow evening, right?
We do. And do we do that now, or do we do that in camera?
We just do it in camera after, just a quick couple minutes discussion.
Okay. Okay, great, we need a motion for a camera.
Also move.
Secondary?
Secondary.
Care to say aye?
Aye.
I'll just say nay. Okay. Let me make sure that that isn't blocked. And then we're gonna come off real quick anyways. I don't believe it's.
Recording stopped.
Gonna take a twenty-five minute rip.
We have screen viewers when I look.
You, let me handle one.